And then you have to have a little tiny bit of rhythm. This basically, his hands aren't strung, he's that new. But anyway, you get a little bounce to him to have him dance. Type of thing. And that's done with the foot bar. And it's made, just made it like a teeter totter one. Right ahead.
So you're holding this one with your left hand?
No, I'll hold that one like that. Just grab it around.
Okay.
And this one is out the front. And you make it like a teeter totter. One, one, two, three, four.
Wow, look at that.
See, this side has got to go ahead. Don't, that's it, you got it. You can come to work next week.
All right, I will be here, Bob. I will be here.
I know we have made our mark in Los Angeles indirectly. You know, a lot of people that have passed through these doors and are beginning to come back again and say hello. Thank goodness. And I'm hoping that, that we'll be able to expand them. I'm hoping we can eventually do even bigger type of things here. I'm hoping that we'll have a school which will teach children and adults puppetry, along with being able to do it on film, on video, video type thing.
I understand it hasn't been all fun and games just to even maintain the theater. Here, you've had a couple of ups and downs, and I think we were almost close to a point where it was almost about to shut down.
Well, we've been on a pogo stick, believe it or not. We're up, we're down, we're up, we're down. I try to go around.
Nothing there up, right?
I try to go on a, yeah, I try to go on a pretty level thing in between it all. It takes a lot of money to maintain a puppet theater of this sort. We used to figure it was about thirty thousand dollars a month to keep it open. Now it's gone up to fifty, sixty thousand. And we're not making it, basically. We, the children, we let them come in from the schools at a cut price because they can't afford a higher price. We've had to raise our admission prices to the theater just recently. I said, "Do we dare?" They said, "You don't have to do any daring, we've already done it." And I said, "Oh gosh, I hope they come." Well, they're coming still. Maybe not in droves, but they do come. We have been the best health secret in downtown Los Angeles for the last fifty years, believe it or not.
Mmm, that smells like wintergreen! Oh yeah, that's a type of peppermint. You didn't know that? No? How about spearmint? Oh, you're just ready to have one, aren't you? Made me want to kiss. Guess that makes you my girlfriend. Let's see. Mmm, that's a good one, that's a little bubblegum. Sorry, I didn't get it in your hair, don't worry. And then we'll just follow up with a little cantaloupe.
Yeah.
And how about a little watermelon? Let's see. How about this one? Ooh, this smells meaty. Holy sausage! There we go, guys.
How can the public show their supporter come out and be a part of this, or, you know, just be able to...
Well, there are three or four ways. One is to call up and make a reservation. You can do it on the internet, you can also call us and attend a show, that helps us, and that helps the Bob Baker Marionette Theater part. Also, you can make a donation to the theater if you wish, which we'd love. And we are getting us, we also have a nonprofit corporation, which all of this is listed, I believe, on our website.
The Bob Baker Marionette Theater has been a Los Angeles institution for forty-eight years. To find out about attending a show or having a show come to you, check out the website at www.bobbakermarionettes.com.
As many people that come through the doors, and people that even just come in to take a look at the space, always say, "This has a great feeling."
And a great reputation. The Falcon Theater, founded by television and film award-winning director Gary Marshall, continues to bring life to some of the most dynamic stage performances in Los Angeles.
Well, you know what? I really enjoyed this last one that we closed our season with this last year. It was called "Everybody Say Cheese."
Ah.
And it was the one that was written by Gary Marshall.
Okay.
The cast was so fantastic, and it was a comedy, but it was so touching. I love plays that have a real arc.
Mr. Marshall built the Falcon Theater in 1997 with his daughter Kathleen, launching what has become a mini-family empire.
This is a small, family-run business, and it's very much that way. It's very family, very hands-on, and it is just a very small company, it's a very small staff. The stage is almost as big as the theater seating area. We have a hundred and thirty seats, so it feels very intimate and comfortable. Every seat's a good seat. We don't have one core company of actors, and we don't have one artistic director. So when you come to the Falcon, you're always seeing something different.
Fellowship, a musical parody of The Fellowship of the Ring, directed by Joel McQuarrie, was recently featured at the Falcon Theater.
It's a great space, it's a great location. I've worked with Gary Marshall before, so I kind of had an in there, it's like, hey, Gary's too good.
Rubbing apples with the big guys, right?
Yeah, well, you know, I make a couple appearances in the Princess Diaries movies, so I worked with him on those. And so it just seemed like a perfect fit, you know?
Because it is a small family theater, all scripts submitted for stage consideration have to go through a selection and approval process, handled specifically by Marshall and his daughter.
They're actually the ones with the final say in what we choose for our five-play subscription season.
Whoa, so Gary Marshall actually gets in there and gets in the mix?
Absolutely.
Once a play gets the green light, the pre-production process begins: auditions, props, costuming, and rehearsals until opening night. Like all composers, Fellowship music director Alan Simpson says, "Once you've experienced the Fellowship," he wants the audience to leave with a jingle in their heads.
Wow, well, the biggest compliment that I ever get after people see the show is that they come up to me later and they say, "I'm still humming the songs." You know, so as a composer, what more can you ask for? My wife, Tracy Burns, often tells me, she'll walk into my studio sometimes and she'll just say, "Thanks, thanks so much." And I know over the years now what that means. It means that she's got some tune in her head that she can't get out.
The Falcon Theater offers a full schedule of live theatrical entertainment all year long. Check them out at www.falcontheater.com. You won't believe what you've been missing.
Our goal here is to open the doors of this center to the diverse communities of Los Angeles.
The new vibrant L.A. Theater Center and the Latino Theater Company, located in the heart of downtown Los Angeles, is a destination for those pursuing artistic excellence, as either a performer or an audience member, a laboratory, according to both founder and co-founder Jose Luis Valenzuela and Evelyn Fernandez.
I think so many times people don't realize how vibrant we are, especially in the grassroots arts community, there's a lot of great art that is being created. And so hopefully, you know, this is a place for those people to come in and shine a little bit.
L A T C is also the home of the Latino Museum of Art and Culture, the Robie Theater Company, the American Indian Dance Company, and the East L.A. Classical Theater, with many diverse performances in the works.
You know, we're doing the season. This begins in October. Now we do Solitude. We're doing an African-American play called River Niger, which is wonderful. A Filipino play, which is called Ruby Tragically Rotan, which is very nice. And then Latina in the Luz, it's a one-woman show.
That's cool.
Yeah, Latina in the Luz, that's a good name. And then La Virgen, and we do La Virgen again.
It's just inspiring to know that there's so many great artists out there, theater artists, musicians, visual artists.
While celebrating the Latino experience, the Theater Company also embraces Los Angeles, one of the most diverse cities in the world.
We do a lot of Latino because that's our base, but we definitely want other communities to come in here. I mean, if you are black, brown, white, yellow, gay, straight, disabled, you have a home at the new L A T C. I mean, that's what this place is about, and it's for all of L.A.
I believe our community needs to have places like this, and more places, and this is one of the many places that the community should have.
The Latino Theater Company isn't just about live theater, they make movies too. You did Luminarias, is the one that I love. You did such a great job there.
Thank you.
So you said you were working on another movie that's in post right now, correct?
Yeah, it's called Dementia. It's also an adaptation of a play that we did several years ago. And again, we're broaching a subject that sometimes the Latino community is not very comfortable with.
And when people come here to actually see one of these programs or one of these events, what do you hope they walk away with? What do you truly, they walk through those double doors and they leave, what do you hope they walk away with?
We hope that they walk away with a global vision, you know, that we're on this planet together as communities, you know? Gone are the days where, you know, this is Latino, this is black, this is Asian, this is white. You know, if you, if you get off of a plane at LAX, I mean, that's L.A. I mean, you get off, and I mean, there's people of all cultures speaking so many different languages, and that's what we hope the experience is here at the new L A T C. It's about, you know, the big picture.
To learn more about what's happening with the Latino Theater Company and the Los Angeles Theater Center, go to www.theLATC.org.
Thanks for joining us here on Live in L.A. You know what, Russia? We had a good time.
Oh, absolutely. And Julian, you actually have got some dancing skills.
Well, thank you. You know what, I think we're ready to try out for Dancing with the Stars. What do you think?
Uh, not so soon, happy feet. As you can tell, we've had a wonderful time here at Third Street Dance in West Los Angeles.
That's right, and remember, if it's live entertainment...
It's Live in L.A.
Where can you find out about what's live in L.A.? Here's a quick guide to some of the best resources on the web. The City of Los Angeles offers two great destinations. CultureLA.org will bring you to the home of the City of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs, which supports free, high-quality arts and cultural experiences throughout the city. LAParks.org is the website of the City of Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks. Take in, or take part, in live events throughout the city's parks and recreation facilities. The L.A. Weekly Newspaper's website, LAWeekly.com, offers their L.A.'s essential calendar, which features the best in live art and entertainment, nightclubs, and much more. Then, there's GoldStar.com, featured previously on Live in L.A., which not only includes a full calendar of live entertainment, but unique discounts at many locations. ExperienceLA.com is a cultural calendar and trip planner, and offers not only a calendar of events, but links to special events and destinations, and some suggested L.A.-area adventures. Now you're ready. It's not a secret anymore. If you just know where to look, there are hundreds and hundreds of chances to take in the best performance arts in the country. Live in L.A.
It's our duty to serve veterans and military families who serve their country in the most difficult ways imaginable. Together, we can say thank you in so many ways. Small acts of kindness mean more than anything. With our support, veterans and military families can face even the most difficult challenges. Let's honor their service with ours.
L.A. City View Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Friday, October 29th, 2010. We are here in John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., except for the first Friday of every other month when we're in Van Nuys City Council Chambers. Want to welcome members of the public who are here today with us in Council Chambers. Each Friday, we also celebrate important individuals and dates, organizations, and other entities making a difference here in Los Angeles, and we thank everybody who has taken time to be here on Friday. We do have four presentations for today that we will have from Council members Rosendahl, Parks, Mr. Coretz for Mr. Labonge, and Councilmember Wesson as well. Those will begin shortly. Want to thank those Councilmembers who are here on time pursuing the council rules. All Councilmembers should be here, and it is after the prescribed hour of our meeting, so thank you to Councilmembers Cardenis, Coretz, Kerkorian, Parks, Rosendahl, and Zine. Mr. Labonge, Ms. Perry are excused today, so that leaves us waiting for Mr. Alarcon, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Uizar, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Smith and Mr. Wesson. If you'll please join us as soon as possible, and we'll begin our presentations shortly. Again, we want to thank Channel 35, which broadcasts these meetings live throughout the city's cable system. We're also available on the internet at LACity.org, and all of our agendas are made available there too. One last note, if you'd like to be heard today for any of the items that are before us, just fill out a speaker card in the back, and we'll be sure to incorporate that into the meeting for any items that have not yet had a hearing or for our general public comment. We will begin shortly. Thank you for your patience. Thank you again to the Councilmembers. We're still awaiting Ms. Hahn, Mr. Uizar, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Wesson. But in the meantime, why don't we begin our presentations? And I'd like to recognize first the Councilmember from Council District 11, who is also the Chair of our Transportation Committee, Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, for our first presentation. Mr. Rosendahl, the podium is yours. And while we're waiting, I'd like to recognize Mr. Zine for a quick introduction, Mr. Rosendahl, as they go up. Mr. Zine has a couple guests just to introduce, and then we'll turn over to Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. President, with us today, we're very honored to have with us members of the United States Army, the Recruiting Battalion that represents this region, Lieutenant Colonel Blankenship, Lieutenant Colonel Phelps. And we have a recruit to the United States Army called a future soldier who's going to be leaving his profession as a principal, joining the United States Army, and that is Matt McCarron. And also Captain Kim, who's a member of the United States Army, who is a helicopter pilot. I want to start with a little introduction, Lieutenant Colonel Blankenship, who's the Lieutenant Colonel in charge of recruitment for this area.
Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. We're glad that Councilman Zine is a great supporter of our battalion here in Los Angeles. I have the proud privilege and honor to command the young men and women that do the recruiting for our nation's army here in Los Angeles. And it's an absolute pleasure to provide those opportunities to the young men and women of L.A. And I don't want to take too much time, because we have one of them here this morning that can talk to you about that.
Lieutenant Colonel Phelps, who is a range United States Army, and he's the professor at UCLA and CSUN. So if you wanted to get an education and have the government pay for it, see Lieutenant Colonel Phelps.
Again, it's a pleasure to be here this morning. It is truly an honor to mentor and train the future leadership of the Army here, coming out of the SoCal area, so thanks for having us here today.
And we have the captain that flies the helicopter, avoids all the traffic on the freeways, Captain Kim.
Ladies and gentlemen, Captain Kim, I am the enrollment officer at UCLA. Colonel Phelps is my boss, but it's a pleasure to be here, and yeah, I am a Black Hawk pilot, so I'm glad to be here. Thanks.
It's interesting, Captain Kim wanted to be a doctor, but instead he joined the Army in flying helicopters. And then just our final, who's going to be going to boot camp, leaving the teaching profession. Matt, come forward.
It's a pleasure to be here. I've made a change from Councilman Alarcon's districts in working at education to go into basic training, so I'm spending a lot of time getting ready. I'm shipping off in January. It's going to be our great city's loss and the county's gain, to be honest with you. Rita attended Scripps College in Claremont, California, where she earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in American History and Literature in 1975. She began her career shortly thereafter with the city of Los Angeles in April of 1976. Now, that's a few years ago, as a management assistant at the Community Development Department. She quickly rose through the ranks, serving within various city departments, and managed several departments, including the Housing Department, Bureau of Sanitation, and the Department of Transportation. When she was running the Bureau of Sanitation, I had the pleasure of being Chair of Public Works. Mr. Smith, who's been a longstanding member of that committee, turned to me and he said, "We really have to do something on recycling. We really have to do something with the dumps." And he looked at Rita with a very strong, determined look, and Rita just rolled with it and absolutely turned that department around and made us one of the greenest, cleanest recycling cities in the nation. And I said, "Wow." And then the next breath, "Come on up, Greg, while we're just on that point," she was then asked to be the Department of Transportation. And we all definitely know that the gridlock and the frustration that the drivers have here is paramount. And from the heart, she took it over and put an energy in there that has still maintained. Look behind me, the senior staff of the department that have worked with her. Just amazing. She's widely respected among the public, her peers, management, and of course, we elected officials for her innovation, strategic vision, and problem-solving ability. She provides incredible leadership for the city government at all levels. She's a straight shooter, and boy, in politics, it's nice to have a straight shooter around, who's not afraid to tell it like it is. She never feels compelled to overpromise, and she always delivers. Rita has been a dedicated leader, who has helped her staff and we as a council navigate some of the most difficult times this city government has ever faced. For all of that and more, I want to express my sincere gratitude and wish you continued happiness and success in all your subsequent endeavors. And boy, again, the county is lucky. Thank you, Rita. We have a big cert here from everybody, and before you speak, my colleague, Mr. Smith, is going to come up and make another presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. I'm here officially on behalf of Chief Beck, who could be today, to present a resolution from the Police Department. And when I saw this, and I just showed it to Mr. Parks, we both agreed the department's budget is too big. This is gorgeous. You'll see in a minute. But first, let me just say a few words. I had been here maybe six months when I had my first interaction with Rita, and it was not a good one. We were fighting over the extension of the Sunshine Canyon landfill contract.
Right.
And I said to the city, "We had the worst contractor I'd ever seen in my life. I don't know who drafted it, but the city was getting the short end of the stick to the $200 million a year." It was a horrible contract. And I came in the council and I said, "Please don't sign the contract. Let us negotiate." And the council went along with me, but they said, "You got a short fuse here, because this contract ends on like Friday afternoon." This was on Tuesday or Wednesday. And I said, "Please, trust me, we would get a better contract." I went into a meeting with the Director of Sanitation, Rita, and we sat in a room, and if darts could kill that were coming out of her eyes, I would not be here today, believe me. She was like, "What are you doing to us?" I said, "Please, trust me." At 5:00 on that Friday afternoon, BFI walked in the door with a much better contract that saved the city millions of dollars, gave her more flexibility to do her job, and we went on to become, and I think, and I say this today, we've become the best of friends. And I've sat here in the Budget Committee many times, and I said, "I think we have two or three great managers in the city of L.A.," and Rita was always at the top of that list. Rita is a tremendous manager. What she did in sanitation, and I saw some of the sanitation bureau folks just came to say goodbye to her as well, was extraordinary. And when she went to DOT, I said, "This is going to be a very troubling transition for you. DOT is a tough department to work with. It moves people, but the department moves slowly." So we'll leave it at that. But I said, "I can't imagine anybody. We better have a DOT to try and get this department moving in the right direction." And she has done a wonderful job. Now, we had a big dust-up. My staff wanted me to say to you, "Wilbur," but we had a little fight in our district recently. But nonetheless, at the end of all this, we are still friends. I consider one of my dearest friends, my greatest associate here at my 32 years. She's got a year on me here at the city of L.A. Rita was a great manager. She's a role model for people that want to become general managers, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate personally, from the 12th district, me personally, having the opportunity to work with her. Now, on behalf of Chief Beck, I want to present to you this resolution, which is a gorgeous resolution, and if you come look at it, you will agree with me, the department has too much money, I think. So, we will certainly take a look at this. This is a gorgeous resolution, which recognizes her 33 years, but really recognizes the fact that DOT is a significant, significant partner with the Department of the Police Department in moving people through the city, handling our traffic, handling emergency situations, and under her management, DOT and LAPD have come closer and better working partners, and it's a better, both departments are better for your leadership and management. On behalf of me personally, on behalf of Charlie Beck, I present you this resolution of the Los Angeles Police Department. It is a gorgeous resolution, and I know Charlie feels as I do, you're a great loss, and I'm going to kick Bill Fujioka's rear in next time I see him. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. We have a number of council members that would like to add their good wishes as well. Ms. Perry is our first.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And before I begin my remarks about Ms. Robertson, I want to send a secretly encoded message to someone up the hill, which is, "Fuji, stay out of the building, okay?" Okay? And we all know who we're talking about. Okay? So that's enough. You know, the door's closed now, okay? And I, you know, I'm glad that you're just up the hill, so we can still find you if we need you. But Rita, you've been a joy to work with. You've always been responsive in whatever position you held, and you have been an expert in many fields, not just in transportation, and I've enjoyed working with you. You've had a glorious career here in the city of Los Angeles, and I'm heartened by the fact that you will be continuing your career in public service, although I know you were recruited, but that's okay. I understand. I hope you have a wonderful time in your next phase of your life, not only personally, but professionally, and that you continue to think of us as your extended family, and maybe our paths will cross again.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rita, I just wanted to say thank you for all the service. You've been a general manager at Los Tract, DOT, sanitation, assistant general manager in a number of places, but it is clear that you understand that role. And one of the things I'll always remember, one day you're sitting here being grilled about something, and people ask you the same question about 12 different ways, and you answered it the same way each time, and then finally, you looked up and said, "I'm not going to lie. I'm just going to tell you what the truth is, and I'm going to say it over and over again." And I think that's what general managers should do, in giving true information, allow the policymakers to make their decision, but not be looking for swaying of where eight votes may be or three votes might be. And it's really a pleasure to see that. When you came to speak to me about this major decision, I listened to you, and I said, "You were so good. I was going to ask you, could I go with you?" But you said no. But I am so pleased to see that you're going to continue expanding your horizon. I think that's a great deal that you're going to be over the county. All of those responsibilities, you've done them. You're just going to do them on a broader level. And so, just have a great time, just keep doing what you've been doing, and I think there are people that just so appreciate your talents, that that's why you got that phone call, and that's why you will continue to be successful. So thank you very much.
Mr. Cardenas.
Rita, I just want to say you've made my responsibilities as a councilman much more enjoyable, because working with you is working with a true, true professional. You're very honest, you're very straightforward, and even when you get pressures from elected officers or what have you, you still say what you believe is correct and the truth, and you don't try to push policy on the policymakers. But what you do do, which I think is the responsibility of all staff in this building, is to just tell us what you know, tell us what your recommendation is, so that we can make good, informed policy decisions. And I just want to congratulate you. Just the other day, you stepped up to the plate, right here in this room, when the mayor's office had a representative trying to explain to us how we shouldn't follow the policy that was put forth before one of the committees of the city council, and also that we shouldn't follow the policy that was recommended by your office, by your department. And you stuck to your guns, and you said, "Look, these are the reasons why we need to do X." And I really want to tell you, I appreciate that. I wish we could get that on tape and then give it to all the managers in the city of Los Angeles, so they can understand that you have a responsibility of being respected for what you know and what we've hired you for. Now, if we want to disagree with you, that's a different story. But no one, no one should allow themselves to be forced into saying something they don't believe in, and you've never done that. I've never heard of you doing that. I've witnessed you do the right thing over and over again. You're the kind of person that should be the model for every employee when it comes to public service, and also, at the same time, I want to say, I always think of my parents when I think about the work that I do. As far as I'm concerned, you made your parents proud. Congratulations, and thank you so much for all your wonderful service.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Uisar.
Well, thank you so much, Rita, and thank you for helping us cut the red tape when we had issues, whether it was transportation or the other departments that you served in. You certainly have been someone who just wants to get the job done, and you know what the goal is, you know what we're trying to accomplish, and you help us get there. And it wasn't because you wanted to help CD 14 or CD 1 or any council, it was because you wanted to help the people of the city of Los Angeles. And you know that sometimes it takes us focusing and always saying, finding a way to yes. So thank you so much. I enjoyed sitting with you on the Board of Directors for Metro. I value your input and all your knowledge you brought to that, and all the knowledge that you bring with you, having served the city so long. It's the county's gain, our loss, but hopefully we get to still see you and call upon you to share with us your knowledge and insights. Thank you so much, Rita.
Thank you, Mr. Uisar. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker.
Thank you. I just wanted to rise, Rita, and just echo the sentiments of all of my colleagues here in the City Council, that you really have had such a great career in public service here in the city of Los Angeles. And your skills as a general manager really were so important, because, you know, every department really takes its inspiration and takes its orders from the top. And you, as a woman, were a terrific role model for other general managers, but really for a lot of women employees in the city of Los Angeles. You were someone that they could look at and look to for inspiration. And I know my brother Mayor Hahn had tremendous faith and trust in you the whole time he was mayor, and he always spoke so highly of you. But, you know, the county is just, you know, it's part of our family too, and we like the fact that the county will have a good general manager, and we'll have someone of your caliber to work at the county, and I certainly have a fond affection for what goes on at the county as well. So I think it's a great choice, and they're really lucky to have you, but we will miss you tremendously.
Mr. Zine.
Oh, good morning. Good morning. Turn around and look at all the people supporting you there. There's a lady who's trying to hide her face, who was a former general manager, who snuck in there. Good morning. So as you retire after your 33 years, I think you've served every department that the city has, because you were assistant general manager, general manager, worker bee, you name it, and you were there. And always that smile, always that can-do attitude, always making it happen, and the challenging task of DOT with transportation in our city. So I wish you well in your retirement. I've seen you at the sanitation when you were working there, the sanitation parties and different events. You've definitely been an integral part of the city for so many years. So I wish you and your family well in your retirement, and there's only one thing you got to remember in retirement, is you got to wake up. That's all you have to do, because the first month that check shows up, and thank goodness, it's there to keep you going. So bless you and your family, and many, many happy years in retirement to you, Rita. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members. And Rita, I rise to tell you that I'm really going to miss you, and that I appreciate, I mean, this is a department head, general manager, that is very creative, and you creatively got my fat out of the fire on numerous occasions, and I do appreciate that very, very much. And what we're going to do for African-American History Month this year is, you know, usually we highlight elected officials and what have you. This year, we're going to highlight all of the African-American general managers and assistant general managers. So my office will be contacting you, because we're going to need photos from like when you were a child all the way to now. So hopefully, this will be a great display for the month of February, and I think that the employees here and the people that visit here really need to get a look at the people that helped move this city in the right direction. So good luck to you. I really wish you would have told me when we met three days before the announcement was made, but I knew something was up. But thank you for helping me personally very, very much. You will be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. And Rita, let me add my words as well, whether it was housing, and we worked very closely on housing issues together, and, you know, you have many, many legacies here. If you look at housing and the way things were done a decade ago, it was about who you knew, and which council member was pushing a project, and where the political juice was. Now, we do things on the points, and we do things that have attracted the private sector to come in to do affordable housing, and to give competition to our great nonprofits. You were part of a clean sweep there and laid down that foundation, I think, for reform sanitation. Don't worry, we all have that first interaction with Mr. Smith, but it gets much better, and you did some amazing things to continue. We will be and are still, I think, the best big city in America on our recycling, on changing how we look at trash and waste, and your legacy is profound there. Transportation, I know, has been frustrating for you. It's been a frustration for all of us stuck in traffic, whether that's political or whether that's on the streets. And I just want to say that I hope that you would be here for even longer time in all sorts of different roles. The county is extremely lucky to get you, but one thing I respect is a lot of people around here sugarcoat what they say, and they tell you what you want to hear. You tell it like it is. I think that is the one thing that everybody says about Rita Robinson. She tells it like it is. And in an era when people don't believe government works for you, the words that come out of your mouth reassure people that people are in this for the right reasons, don't have to dress it up, don't have to make it look pretty. They can tell you the hard truths as well as a pathway to get to a better tomorrow, and you have shown me a way to do that. You've been an inspiring mentor to me, even as an elected official here, and I hope that we can continue to work closely together on improving Los Angeles. Congratulations to you and the sacrifices your friends and family have made, as well as your team at DOT. So congratulations, and with that, I'll hand it back to you.
And before Rita speaks, colleagues, there'll be another quick presentation, but I'd like to introduce her fiancee and her parents, and Uncle Willie over here, which is family. Now, we were talking sanitation, but I just, you know, I just want to let Mr. Zine know, she's not retiring. She's going over to beaches and harbors, and I'm going to be working with her still, because we've got the beach community. So it's just a shift in location, but continued to do her public service. But I'd like to turn this over to the Bureau of Sanitation, who wants to present a plaque and make a comment or two. Oh, and we can't, you know, we didn't see you. Excellent.
You know, they would not let me in and had to use my pull with you, Rita. It would be allowed in the chamber. Well, Rita, as your former subordinate, you know, let me just say that in your tenure as general manager of sanitation, you touched the hearts of every employee. You inspired our souls, and you mentored our minds. And from one of your mentees, and from all of the employees in the Bureau of Sanitation, would love, we present you this note of appreciation. Thank you.
And now, ladies and gentlemen, the honorable Rita Roberts. let me just say that in your tenure as general manager of sanitation, you touched the hearts of every employee. You inspired our souls, and you mentored our minds. And from one of your mentees, and from all of the employees in the Bureau of Sanitation, would love, we present you this note of appreciation. Thank you.[588.59][588.59](APPLAUSE)
And now, ladies and gentlemen, the honorable Rita Roberts.
I usually am not for a lack of words, but I can only I can only tell you when I look in my rearview mirror, there's just so much there. And the great thing about that is, the only reason why I'm standing in front is because of all of those people behind. Otherwise, it wouldn't matter. So, for my mom, Grace, and my grandparents, Emily and Finis, and friend of my life, Peg Rogers, I have to say that this has been such an incredible journey of so many people. When I look around this room, and I can only just laugh as the slides go by of so many things that we experienced as kids, many of us starting as kids, many of us trying to find our way in the city. And I remember when we used to say, "Oh, if we were just a chief, we'd be happy for the rest of our lives." I remember those conversations. You know, I remember Jerry Miller and I sharing a cubicle and sharing a phone back in the day. And I am so appreciative, from the bottom of my heart, not only for my Uncle Willie, who's here, the oldest member of my family that's still here, for Dad Thurman and Mom Thurman, who took the reins of my parenthood. Because I can tell you, even as you're older, you still need your parents. And God is always gracious to provide a substitute when yours are not there. And He did with Mom and Dad Thurman, who I've known since I was 13, and who trusted me with their children unwittingly at those years. But we all made it through. Their children are still here, and so am I. So, we all made it through. And now, their children have children. So, and many of you know, I was never married or had children, but I was always enriched by the lives of all of you. I've always, I've been to more baby showers, and bar mitzvahs, and bat mitzvahs, and seder dinners, and all kinds of celebrations of every rank and religion I can imagine, only because of all of you. Because you made me part of your families. You just, you took me in, and I learned from you and loved you just as if you were my very own. And I still do, and I always will. I will always love this city. I have loved everybody that I've worked with. I was thinking last night of when I used to be in the CAO's office till 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning during budget season, which was not unusual, that there were custodial workers who would come by, and they would say, "You still here?" So, they would, they worked the late shift in those days, and they would go out and get dinner. And they would bring something back for me. And when things didn't look too good in the city, when we were going through a lot of civil unrest and things, I remember those guys coming by and saying, "Okay, we're going to follow you home and make sure you get home okay." And so, for about two weeks, they followed me home and made sure I got inside my house, and then they went about their business. And those are things you don't forget. Those are, these are people in this city who work hard jobs. They don't make a lot of money, all of them, but they love this city, and they would do anything they could. And every experience you've given me in this city, to experience their care has only inspired me to want to care more. And that's why I think I'm here. When I was asked about going to the county, I struggled so hard with the decision. And my dad, who is also a Dr. Reverend, preached a sermon, but Mom told me I couldn't miss the service. And I said, "Oh, I'm so tired. Can I not go?" And when your mom says you go, you go. So, you go. So, I went to this service. And Dad got up, and his verse was Jeremiah 29:11, and it was, you know, "God has a plan for you." And that touched me to my core. And sometimes, the plan's not your plan, it's God's plan. And so, that's why it was, I knew I had to move on. But I also know that I've left so many wonderful people here as carry-on the work. I mean, you see them behind me. It doesn't matter if they're contractors, or consultants, or whatever. There are people here that can carry this work forward. And so, just trust them, care for them, love them. Many of them don't have as much in the bank as I did to say some of the things that I say. You know, I think that's also part of it. You know, you can't get any money out the bank if you don't put any money in the bank. So, you know, so you just have to kind of give them an opportunity to win sometime, and for you to trust them. And Councilmember Cardenas, I want to say something publicly to you. A few years ago, and it has never left my soul, when I sit in that chair, you asked me a question that I don't even know if you remember. You asked me, you've been through all these departments, you've done all this work, you've done all these things. What sustains you? And I remembered, it was such an odd question, and it was one that I just couldn't figure out what answer is he looking for. But I remember, the only thing I could tell you was that a deeply rooted faith that is unyielding, friends and family that surround me and support me, that I see now here, and now, a fiance that I didn't have before, in Michael, whom I love dearly. And so, I remember saying that to you, and I remember the council chamber just got eeringly still, because I just don't think anybody knew what answer would come. But ever since then, I really do know that that is what sustains me. And so, I am just grateful to be here. Mr. Comrie, Keith Comrie, told me something that you hit upon when you spoke, is that when we were in the contentious discussion about sanitation, well, actually sanitation, and also back in the day about Lopez Canyon. And Mr. Alak, I remember this, when we were closing Lopez Canyon, and we did the task force report for Mr. Deaton and Mr. Comrie, and I was going up and down the steps, within wordsmithing the final report, which would close the canyon and everything. And I was so passionate about it. I wanted it to be right, and I wanted the city to have the best opportunities to do the right thing. And Mr. Comrie said, "Sit down." And neither of you know that Mr. Comrie didn't usually have you sitting in his office. He just wasn't the kind of talky guy. And he said, "You have misplaced passion." He said, "You're very, you are excellent at what you do. You're going to be a major player in the city in the future, but you don't have a vote, Rita. Your job is to give the policymakers the best information for them to make the best decision they can make. But your job is not to be passionate about the vote, but to be passionate about the information. And if you stay on that course, you will do well." And I never forgot that, because that's all I've ever done, is to just make it clear to you, so you can make the decision that you want us to implement. And so, I would just say, in closing, that all of you that are here, every single face, every, every single person, every I, I love you all. I've always said it was never politically correct, but I've told myself a million times how much I love them. And I don't care that it's not politically correct, because the only way I know how to live is to love. That's the only way I know how to live. And I thank all of you for your support, your kind words, your hugs, your kisses, everything that you've ever done for me. I appreciate, because you have been my rock. And I know that this city is still going to continue to move forward, no matter what. And I will just be up the hill. You can always roll me down the hill if you need me. You may have to help me back up, but I'll, but I'll roll down the hill for you anytime. And Mayor Villarreal, and all of his staff, who have been so supportive and wonderful to me, including, you know, everything he's ever asked me to do. And he was so gracious when I told him, because it was the hardest conversation he and I have ever had. And he said, "You know, you've done anything anybody in this city has ever asked you to do, whether you wanted to do it or not. You've always done it with grace, and dignity, and excellence." He said, "I cannot ask you not to do something that's not good for you. This is good for you." So, with that, I just know you can call me anytime. Give me at least a few weeks to kind of calm down. But, but thank you, and thank, thank all of you that came today to be with me. I, I just couldn't be in a better place. I just could not be in a better place. And I will never know a family like yours. I will never. I will love the county, but I will always love my family here first.
We're taking an extraordinary group photo for an extraordinary leader in the city.
And then, after that, we will have Mr. Parks do the next presentation after this photo. Our next presentation, presentation number two, will be given by Councilmember Bernard Parks of the 8th District. While we're waiting for the center area to clear, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alak, and Cardenas, Hahn, Weisar, Kurets, Kukoryan, Laban, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present, and a quorum. Mr. President, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Kurets moves, Mr. Kukoryan second, without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Ms. Hahn moves, and Mr. Weisar second, without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda just real quick, colleagues, if there are specials on the agenda, please let me know. We'll hold the commissioner, number one, on the table. First items, please.
Items 1 through 3 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 1 is a commissioner reappointment. As you've noted, we are going to hold that on the desk.
Actually, we can, we can take that on consent.
You'd like, we do have cards for it.
Right, I mean, sorry, without calling special, but we've had public hearings on 1, 2, and 3, I believe, already, correct?
Correct. And committee reports for items 2 and 3 have been submitted and distributed to council.
Okay. Does anybody wish to call those special, 1, 2, or 3? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Items 4 through 7 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Take away.
There has been a request to continue item 7 one week. That would be to November 5, 2010.
No objection to continuing item 7 till the 5th of November. We can, we have cards on the other items?
4, 5, and 6.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards in the public. Next item?
On the continuation agenda, item 8 is a PCN in Council District 14. That is an notice for public hearing. A recommendation is required to grant or deny the application.
And we have a card on that one, so we'll call that special for a card. Next items?
Items 9 through 11 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Mr. Weisar calls those special?
Continue item number 10 till next Wednesday.
Okay.
And we'll hear the other special. Thank you.
You got it? And item number 12, please?
Item 12 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required.
Okay, we do, no objection, we'll consider that. We do have a card on that as well. We'll return to our presentations. Yes, Mr. Parks?
This was special?
Special meeting, we're not, we'll get to that. But when we get to it, I'll make sure it's called special for you, and we'll recognize Mr. Bernard Parks from the 8th Council District for our next presentation, with Ms. Perry from Council District 9.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Today, colleagues, we have a very special person that's in the chambers, and I'd like to ask Lisa Rae McCoy to come up at this time. One of the things that we often bring people to the council, and we honor them for what we know them the best, and that is, in Lisa Rae's case, an actress, a performer, a person that has been on TV, on movies. And we can kind of go through a couple of things that we clearly know that she was involved with the Players Club, the Beauty Shop. She had hit sitcom, All of Us. She currently has her own TV show, The Real McCoy, and it airs weekdays at noon on TV1. But the reason that she's here today is because of her commitment and her involvement as a global ambassador for the Susan G. Coleman Cancer Fund. She has taken on a responsibility to educate the African-American community, particularly females, about breast cancer. And in doing this, she's going to be an ambassador, traveling throughout the world, educating the general population. But also, she has an added issue, which I just saw her in a personal performance, where she is part of the diva singing along with Cheryl Lee Ralph, the longest-running benefit for HIV and AIDS in America. And so, these are the things that we wanted to highlight in her honor, and say thank you for what she's doing, and the commitment that she's making for the health of minority women in this country, and across, across this country, and in the world. And again, we often overlook the fact that when someone is famous in their own right as her skills and talents, but they also have another life, a private life, where they're doing good, and it often does not get articulated in any sense. So, I wanted to make sure that we brought her here and honored her. And as we know, all of us have been touched by cancer in some fashion. I have lost two daughters to cancer. And so, it's something where you look at and you realize that it's there. You realize that there are cures for some, and not cures for others. But I would say, Lisa, thank you for, Lisa Rae, thank you very much for taking on this added commitment to be the visible face as an ambassador for this mission. And let me ask GM Perry to come up at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And I also wanted to thank Ms. McCoy for using her celebrity, her standing, her experience, her ability to communicate with people, and particularly to reach out to the African-American community to educate them on early detection, prevention, self-examination, and all those issues related to breast cancer. By, by doing this, you've already transformed and touched the lives of many. And I think, in the course of all that, I think we maybe can remind people that this is not just a woman's disease, but affects men as well. And to be able to do that on a global basis is even more significant. So, I want to express my appreciation for women that we all represent, and we all care for in our lives. And I can't imagine that there is anyone in this room who has not been touched by this dreaded disease. And so, I want to say thank you to you. Thank you.
Lisa Rae, in behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I wanted to present you with a resolution and say, keep up the good work. And we are certainly glad that you took the time to be here. But we wanted, as many people that are watching on Channel 35 to know, you have another part of your life that you're doing good in the community, and we think that needs to be highlighted.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll hold on to that.
Wow, I am never lost for words either. But I'd like to say that this has been a long time coming. I've always waited for a charity of choice to represent, and Susan G. Coleman making me the global ambassador for my component, which is the Circle of Promise, which is to educate African-Americans about breast cancer, because we have the highest morality rate than any. So, when you are trying to represent that, you have to have someone that represents and looks like you. And I've been chosen, and humbly, I really
15, the shelter in the harbor. I'm sure your grandchildren would love him. He was a stray. Anyone that would like to adopt Mikey, please call 888-452-7381. He also enjoys pretzels. He likes, is that not right? When I met him this morning, he was eating a bag of pretzels. He is, you know, he's a companion animal, and I always say this whenever we have a pet adoption, is that if you want unconditional love, if you want someone that's gonna be by your side even when you forget to give him water or forget that, to give him a treat, it's nothing like a nice dog, or as Mr. Kerets would say, one of his cats. But this is a pig dog, and the costume comes with the dog. So, I mean, you get a special. So, again, we in the city still have a 100% adoption rate where it relates to dogs. Probably 70 to 75% of the dogs we get adopted are adopted by people that are here in the chambers, people that are listening to us on council phone, and city employees. So, we're gonna keep Mikey around for a little while. You really wanna give your family member, you wanna give your son or daughter a treat for Halloween, bring home Mikey in his pig costume.
And I think Mr. Kardnis wants to add his good wishes about that, but, sorry.
On a serious note, whoever adopts Mikey, he likes pretzels, do not give dogs beer. It's bad for them, really, really bad. But they do, but they do have doggy beer, which is specifically made for them, and they really like it a lot to go with his pretzels. But I, I'm gonna refrain from calling the Animal Cruelty Task Force, because I don't think you're crossing the line with that outfit. You're getting pretty darn close to animal cruelty. But also, just a word to the, to the person who adopts beautiful Mikey there is, you do not have to give him the outfit. You can toss it if you want, or give it back to the department. That thing is hideous.
You know, I just say, I'll say this, 'cause Mr. Kardnis and Mr. Alakon and Mr. Kerets, and I could go around the horseshoe, the people have been so supportive of, of the animals in this great city, and I would be remiss if I didn't say that we do the very best that we can to get these animals adopted. But we cannot, we don't have the resources to keep them forever. So, when you adopt a cat, or in this case, when you adopt Mikey, you're saving his life. So, I'm asking you to look in these eyes and save his life. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to recognize Councilmember Parks for a quick introduction, and then Mr. Weezer for a quick introduction as well. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Tom LeBonds right now. As a part of the Sister City Program...
I can see the resemblance.
As a part of the Sister City Program, the Republic of Zambia, for the first time in history, has now opened up a consulate office in the city of Los Angeles. And their ambassador was here earlier this week, Sheila Sowella, and she had, was called back to Washington, DC. But we have today is Alfred Chiozza. He's a former member of the Parliament of Zambia, former member of the National Executive Committee of the ruling party, and he's the former chair of the Zambian Bank. Now, he's the Deputy Ambassador to the United States for the Republic of Zambia, and we'd just like to have him come up and present, in behalf of the Sister City Program, this certificate, and have him make some remarks. Thank you, Mr. President. Turn around, right. I'll hold onto that, he's right up here. Okay, thank you, thank you. Everybody just move right up, so you can be in the photo.
Mr. President, honorable council members, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alfred Chiozza. I'm the Deputy Ambassador, like you've heard. I'm standing in for Ambassador Sheila Sowella. I must accept, it's very humbling to be able to stand in the city chamber of Los Angeles, one of the biggest cities of the world, whose economy we have been told that outranks perhaps 23 countries in Sub-Saharan Africa. At the outset, Mr. President, I would like to bring fraternal greetings from your counterparts, the city of Los Angeles, who are so appreciative of the relationship that we have shared over the years. You will recall that this relationship started in the year, dates back actually, to 1968, and we have since enjoyed warm relationship. You have done quite a lot as the city of Los Angeles, ladies and gentlemen. I can enumerate some of the things that have happened during our relationship. We are very, very mindful that you, you had, the relationship, like I said, started in 1968, and in 1992, city, Sister City delegation visited Zambia and paid their courtesy call to former President Chilua, the second president. In 1995, you arranged and sponsored students from Evan Honda College who came here for some studies. 2004, you hosted the Zambian ambassador in the United States here and donated medical kits, which was in turn passed to university teaching hospital. Those are so many things that you people have done. We are extremely appreciative, and please, we ask you not to tire. You will appreciate that the perception of you Americans of Africa is totally different until you visit the place. You will never be able to appreciate. But for some of you who have visited the place, like Mrs. Robertson here, they will tell you that we are a warm people, it's a good tourist destination, a good investment destination, and I can assure you, it's so peaceful, your investments will be safe. So, it's one hell of a place where you should make an effort to visit when you have time. Mr. President, I don't want to take most of your time, I know you have such a busy schedule, except to thank you in summation, that you have been very, very kind to host us here. I'll take this message back home and say how good you people have been to us. From the day we got here, Mrs. Robertson met us at the airport and ran us around for quite a long time. And I thank her, I thank a young man who is a Zambian national, who we think is a frontline diplomat, in the name of Mulenga, young man here, Mulenga Mweira, who has done so much in keeping the relationship warm. He has had interaction with a lot of you people here. And I'll also be failing not to recognize Mrs. King, who has been very, very helpful in running us around your beautiful city here, whose weather, I must confess, is like Los Angeles, it's like Zambia. So, we have so much in common. And there is something too that the city of Los Angeles has done, I'm sure you know this, is that we named one of our longest roads in, 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 in city of Los Angeles, after the, we gave it the name of Los Angeles Boulevard, and we have Los Angeles Avenue. We have also Brenton Drive. All this is recognition of the help that you have extended to us. Ladies and gentlemen, what better relationship can you have that can beat this kind of thing that we have experienced amongst friends? And don't tire, keep helping us, so that we can also, you can catapult us into the middle-income, you know, ending country of the world. You know, when you do that, you bring peace in the world, and all these problems we have, terrorism, whatever, when you educate and lift people from poverty, I can assure you, the rest will be history. Mr. President, allow me to thank you for giving me this humbling experience to stand before you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And thank you to Dr. Robertson, and thank you very much for being here. It's our honor to have you here in council chambers today. I've enjoyed being in Zambia before, and we look forward to continued friendship between our countries. Mr. Weezer has friendship of another country as well. We have some great guests here. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you for this opportunity to introduce. We have visiting today three judges from the Mexican state of Jalisco. I'd like to welcome the licenciado Luis Carlos Vega Palmenes, and also the licenciado Federico Hernandez Corona, and also last night, the main judge, the chief judge, was honored by the Mexican-American Bar Association in their judges' night, their annual judges' night, the first time a foreign judge was recognized. He's also with us today, Celso Rodriguez Gonzalez, the chief judge of the state of Jalisco. Welcome to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. We'll go to our public comment now. Dr. Clyde Williams will be our first speaker. We'll move the, we can ask the Sergeant at Arms to assist us. Go ahead, you can just move that to the side, Dr. Williams, thank you. After that will be Arnold Sacks.
Good morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Last night, there was an interesting meeting in Al Hamra City. However, it was talking about the high-speed rail coming from San Diego through San Bernardino and on into the Union Station of Los Angeles. However, it also pointed out that it's going to cost a lot of money, and it's going to get a lot of people upset, because there were 150-some people in Al Hamra, and another 150 to 200 people in Rosemead that didn't want the high-speed rail on I-10. However, there haven't been any meetings in the city of Los Angeles or city tourists, where we have a lot of people that would be interested in knowing where the high-speed rail is going to go. Because one of the alternatives takes it along the I-10 to Cal State LA, then it goes across to Valley Boulevard, and then along Main Street, down into the north end of Union Station. An other alternative would be to take it on Valley Boulevard, and then turn left, go south on Mission Road, all the way down past Chavez, past the First Street Bridge, probably down to near the Sixth Street Bridge before going across the river and coming back. We don't know what we're going to get in the city of Los Angeles, and the High-Speed Rail Authority has not been very open in providing us with any information regarding where it's going to go and how they want to destroy our communities. This is an industrial area, but it's also home to Ramona Gardens and several other areas within the LA 32 Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
Arnold Sacks.
Good morning. Thank you. Arnold Sacks. I can quickly answer Dr. Williams' question about what you're gonna get. You're gonna get the shaft. This is the high-speed rail in government. That's what'll end up happening there. I'd like to take a moment to thank Councilman Alakon, even though he's not in the chambers, for last week having finally stepped up to the plate and announced that there were 370, or not, have announced in chambers that there were 375 layoffs in the city. The unfortunate part of that announcement was, is those announcements took, those layoffs took place July 1st, which is not the fiscal year that would have been affected by the pay raise that you so diligently bartered with the unions when you got the 5% pay raise that was based on layoffs. So, the question would be, how many people were laid off in last fiscal year? Because that's the year that kicked in the layoff, pay raise requirement. That's how you got the 5%. And who knows what that number was? Could have been any number, 30,000, 30 million, 32 million, 28 million. But that's why your library hours were cut, because you had to balance that part of the budget. Another train of thought here, it's too bad you didn't have the quality and control hearing here today, because it would have been great to ask him what he thought about last week's discussion and the RFP for the airport, how he would have thought, what kind of quality and control do you have when you have the management sit in on the scoring for the people that are being considered for the contracts? But that wasn't addressed here in city council. The RFP was addressed in city council. How wonderful the RFP was. What a wonderful job, what great quality and control.
Zuma Dog.
Yes, we're gonna help raise the reading of LA USB students later, reading out of the LA Times, but yes, Zuma Dog, Matt Dogg, we had to make a stop on part of our You're Welcome America Tour, as we have restored free speech at Venice Beach, as the city of Los Angeles lost in federal court to the Legalese Dream Team of Dow Dogs. So, in case you didn't tune in last week, or in case you weren't in chambers, the city of Los Angeles, so shady, in such violation of the US Constitution, a federal judge, after years of waiting for the city to put something reasonable together, had no choice other than to place a court order injunction on their illegal law. So, what I have to tell the community, the neighborhood council members, LA Clean Sweep, and everybody in Venice, that there will be more chaos at the beach now, because there's not a lottery system. The city had years to settle this matter, and they would have allowed to keep their laws in place. They were stubborn and arrogant and refused to accommodate. So, again, now it will be a jury award for 12 of us, Dow, myself, and 10 others, plus our attorneys, plus when the city cannot afford to enforce things, because the city attorney's office is thin, they're gonna have to defend our 12 cases. Meanwhile, had you have settled, you could have kept your laws in place. And I want the people of LA to know, this is gonna be costing several millions in our payments and in lost time to the city, and had they pulled out chump change, 50 grand, I would have walked away, Dow would have walked away. And you guys think you're in control? You think you're in charge, there's been a power shift in the city of Los Angeles? First of all, someone from the LA Housing Department will be stepping down and getting the hell out of this town, because Zuma Dogg chased him out. The city attorney's office just, just up, trying to figure out what to do at Venice now, along with LAPD, and city council, we are not done in federal court either. So, there's been a power shift. It's Zuma Dogg Dow. You think you cut me off and that matters? We clobbered you for years.
Walsh is our next speaker, John Walsh.
Congratulations to Mr. Marburg and Dow for this fantastic victory. Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, or email us at Hollywood Dems, gmail, at gmail dot com, Twitter, Hollywood Dems, and also Facebook at Mickey Jackson, M-I-K-I. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't know, you pay no attention to East Hollywood. Vermont has been closed both ways to traffic since Tuesday. It will be closed for six full days, both ways from Santa Monica to Melrose. For what? For a carnival, a church carnival. Traffic is in chaos. I don't know, I understand that Eric Gar said he got a phone call from somebody in San Francisco, very important, close person to him, he's not here. Why is the traffic closed? Yet you built Metro Rail. You never closed it for six days. You never closed it more than one night. It's out of control. But it's not where the white people live. It's not where Western La Brea. And when Obama screws things up, it's a big deal. HollywoodHighlands.org. Meg Whitman, she attacked us, Hollywood Highlands, on Channel 2, saying we're smearing her family. We're not smearing her family. We have on our website the arrest report of her son, who beat up his Mexican-American girlfriend. So, in her commercials, she has him as eight or nine years old. Carly Fiorina should be at home fighting cancer. She has a life expectancy of less than six years. And I'm telling you right now, and also Jerry Brown, to get the Democrats, the person in his campaign that called Miss Whitman a whore, was Stephen, was Stephen Glazer.
Walter Bechtel, our next speaker, Walter Bechtel. He's passing. Thank you, Mr. Bechtel.
Well, we had Parks and a couple of other people attempted to deal with the DWP pensions, and the motion was withdrawn. But now, finally, all the firemen and all the police officers in the city, they know the truth. Finally, you bought the city council, you put them into office, and what things did you get? A ballot measure for March and a special election to cut your pensions. Last December, I was here, when there were only 10 members of this council, and they voted a large pay increase to DWP workers. And so much as that constitutes a pay increase, it also increases their overall pensions when they retire. Therefore, not only did they vote to leave the pensions alone for this utility, they voted to take your pensions on a ballot measure against your wishes to cut your benefits indirectly to pass you, as a fireman and as a police officer, anybody here that works for these agencies, you're gonna be paying for the DWP's rate increase in their salaries and pensions for last year indirectly, because they didn't work with you. They take away your hazmat department in the valley in Granada Hills. $10,000, and they can't raise $10,000. Greg Smith and Dennis Zion can't come up with the money to give the chance for, if a child drinks poison, or there's a, there's a chemical substance, or something needed, a hazmat unit is not available in the valley. So, what you're gonna need to do is you're gonna have to switch your allegiance to the competitors that are gonna be running against these incumbents in the next March's election. Vote no on the ballot measure, protect the policemen and the firefighters. Thank you.
Let's go to the San Fernando Valley, Rick Nightingale.
Yeah, good morning. Boy, I'll tell you, I hope you get out and vote. I mean, this is so serious on Proposition 25, when they can take from a 2/3 to a 51%. Just imagine if they turn around and Brown gets in, and he turns around, and they voted on the budget, that they wouldn't have cut what they did, the, what the taxes that you people would be paying, and what else is gonna happen? I'll tell you, it is so important that from then on, you won't have anything to say whatever goes through, that if this thing passes, it's unbelievable. Same as 26, from, between a fee tax and a regular tax, like I said, how they did our trash, that they didn't have to turn around, put on a ballot measure, because it was a fee. So, they can turn around and come up with a fee tax anytime they want. It's not a tax, it's fees. So, they can turn around, and when you don't, that they want, need more money, they always need more money, because they don't believe in having a piggy bank and having some spare money, that this is what's gonna happen. And this marijuana thing, I believe in helping the sick, but it's gone so far overboard, and like I said, I was in construction. Can you imagine working next to somebody, and I was, I owned my own business at the time, that I couldn't fire somebody for being loaded and that stuff on a job that it's gonna affect my insurance and so forth? I mean, this is just so ridiculous, that these, that this city has gone to, or the state has even gone to it. And same as the tax on the parks, that you're gonna get charged $18 for every vehicle in the state of California. This is just crazy. It's just going so far out crazy. And like I said, the only thing that's gonna happen is here, is getting jobs. You need jobs, and the establishment is against it. Look at how they fought everybody. So, you better vote right, go Republican, I'm sorry to say it, for Meg and...
Matt Dow, our final speaker.
All right, thank you. Yes, it's official, breaking news, Channel 35, LA Times yesterday, Venice Boardwalk rules blocked. So, you can see it right there, LA Times, it's online, just search for Venice rules. Here it is, the judge blocked it with an injunction. So, you guys are the legislators, this is the city council of Los Angeles, the ambassador, whoever the dude, he said it before, he was so humbled to be in front of the great city of Los Angeles, one of the greatest, biggest cities in the world, with a huge attorney department across the street, 500 attorneys, here's little old me, Matt Dow, this is my name, right here on the United States District Court, injunction against the city of Los Angeles, and here's me again next week in the Court of Appeals. Now, here's the first question to the city council, why is the federal court keeping us alive all this time? This one's four years, they would have knocked us out. So, anyway, here's the important thing, and here's what I wanna know, why your attorneys missed this, and I got it, the judge said in the ruling, and here it is, from a week ago, that there's been intervening authority. However, intervening authority makes it likely that the permitting system fails constitutional muster. The Ninth Circuit and Burger expressly rejected the city's argument that the permitting system advances its interest. And here's one, see, that's why I'm a photographer too, I gotta mention that, because I got you on the InSense first, that's at the appeal court, I just got an injunction for playing guitar down there, and I'm an international accredited photographer, and the judge said I don't have standing to sue yet, but I'm coming for that if you don't wanna settle the case.
That completes our public comment for today. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
That brings us to item number four, called Special for Cards. Number four, John Walsh, item number four, sir.
Here's the winner, here's the number one winner, Carmen Trutanich on his knees, on his knees. There's your winner, billion dollars worth to us.
Item number four, Mr. Walsh.
Number four, HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns rent-reap accounts, and we want you to know, come to HollywoodHighlands.org, this is not, this is the reap account, this is not presentations, this is the reap account I'm speaking. The nauseating section of self-congratulation is over, which lasted an hour, called presentations. We say 100% for the reap. We are, I think, every single one of these cases, that you should change the property to limeratic, take them reap, rape, and run. That's what's happening here to tenants. HollywoodHighlands.org, thank you.
Zuma Dog, item number four.
Yes, thank you. Four and a half years ago, I stumbled upon these chambers over issues of Venice Beach, and then once I started to send these council meetings, I noticed something rent escrow reap, it kept coming through the agenda. Then I was contacted by Bill Hui from LA Housing Coalition, and I was given quite an education as to what is going on in the, in the LA Housing Department, especially under the rent escrow accounts. I say it's a big hostile vindictive racket against property owners to shake them down and grab the property from them, kick out all the people living there paying affordable rates, and then giving it over to your private developer, expensive contractors, and turning them into luxury condos, and now how's that policy been working for you? So, the first thing I'd like to do is let the city of LA know, I want the people in the LA Housing Department, who are working in fear under the general manager of the LA Housing Department, that you will be seeing change in the LA Housing Department at the top. You will be seeing, I believe, the general manager of the LA Housing Department leaving the city of Los Angeles pronto, getting the heck out of the city, because Zuma Dogg pushed them out, okay? Because I'm bringing a lot of heat to City Hall, and there's been a power shift, and it's to Zuma Dogg, and I, so the reason why all of these rent escrow properties need to be immediately removed, along with all properties in the rent escrow, is because in these council chambers, on July 21st of this year, it was noted by Councilmember Parks, that in a committee meeting, conflict of interest allegations were raised, where you have, and then it was brought to my attention by the department, here's what's happening. Allegedly, you have Roberto Adalte, Assistant General Manager of the Housing Department, he is in charge of the rent escrow. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been awarded to LA Housing Project Law, a rent escrow outreach firm that the city hires. Roberto Adalte is not only the Assistant General Manager of the Housing Department, his name is also listed as the contact person for your outreach contract... his name is also listed as a contact person for your outreach contractor, LA Housing Law Project. And then he's also an attorney, Roberto Adolpe listed, and the same address of his attorney firm is the same one as the outreach contractor you're hiring. The allegation is that Mr. Adolpe is using his position as the outreach contractor to gather information against the property owners and then suing them, having tenants sue the property owners, using the information gathered that you paid him to go out to do. There's going to be massive lawsuits, this is the big one. The Dowd Dog lawsuit pales in comparison to the class actions that will be happening from all these property owners, and there's millions of dollars missing, and you never return the money once it's promised. I'm bringing down City Hall.
Mr. Clerk, there's been a question whether we have a quorum. Sergeant at Arms. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum? Sir, it would appear that we do. We have it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we do have it. Okay, thank you for clarification, we do have our quorum of 10. No, it wasn't you, Mr. Kikorian, it was not you getting your coffee, that wasn't a problem. Matt Dowd.
I don't think there's a Matt Dowd card in there, City of Los Angeles, Channel 35. There is no Matt Dowd card, I don't know what you're calling my name for.
Well, there was a card with your name on it. Wayne Spindler.
The rent escrow program, there's been people that have come here, landlords that have come to this council chambers, questioning some things about this housing department situation. I noticed that a number of these cases, some go back as far as 2007, 2008, 2009. It takes a great deal of time, it seems, to resolve whatever the issue is with these reduction programs. And whenever these type of things take as long as they do, plus rent control ordinances, you're decreasing the value that the landlords have in their properties which have already suffered because of the economic decline. They should work on these cases much faster. I see one is from August 2010. They should wrap these things up within 90 days, they shouldn't be dragging on for years on end because it takes a lot of money to administer such a program over the years. There supposedly is a law firm where somebody involving, the law firm is also working with the city. If this is even possibly true, then the city needs to stop what they're doing here, and they need to go and look at all of these records because the city of Bell is an example, the city of Rancho Cucamonga, and other types of investigations into self-dealing, even with minimal things, dealing with travel expenses now, are getting the attention of the DA. So if this is the case, it's not fair to these landlords, and it's not fair to their tenants, who have to live in these buildings to be held in perpetuity like this. So for the tenants and for the landlords both, they should administer this program much fairer and in a much more expeditious manner.
That matter, colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Number six, please, Mr. Clerk.
Item six, called Special for Cards.
Three cards, Phyllis Doherty in number six.
Good morning, councilmembers, Phyllis Doherty. And I am here as the District Five representative for the Greater Echo Park Elysian Neighborhood Council. We want to thank Councilwoman Garcetti and all of you for supporting this. This is a tribute to Mrs. Remidios Remi Giaga, who was a very, very long time supporter of all of the Philippine community, and she has, we are now asking you to name the intersection of Alvarado and Temple Streets in Historic Filipino Town as a square in her honor. We are joined by the Filipino-American Service Group, FASG, the HI-FI, that's Historic Filipino Town Chamber of Commerce, and the Rotary Club, who are supporting this very well-deserved honor and tribute to the leadership and legacy of Mrs. Giaga, one of the first pioneers in Los Angeles to become an ardent fighter of the rights of Filipino-Americans. Mrs. Giaga served as the president of the Filipino-American Community of Los Angeles, FACLA, from 1974 to 1977. She also served as the president of the San Paquita Women's Circle, co-founder of the Bayon Jan Seniors Association, and co-founder of the Filipino-American Service Group. In these capacities, she dedicated her life to community involvement and political empowerment to improve the quality of life of Filipino-American community of Los Angeles. We are planning to use this as just the beginning of a tribute to our Filipino-American residents and citizens who have done so much for this community and also for this country.
Lisa Box. Happy Halloween.
Happy Halloween. My name's Lisa Box, I'm with the Greater Echo Park Elysian Neighborhood Council, here to speak on Remi's Square. Whether her focus was bringing an important voice to services for senior citizens and youth, or seeking recognition of World War II veterans, or fighting for the rights of Filipino-Americans, for decent housing, education, employment, Miss Giaga's accomplishments and legacy continues to this day in the countless lives she has touched with her work. I also would like to invite everybody here to join the Echo Park Rec Center next to Historic Filipino Town for our Halloween parade, and I'd just like to say salamat ma buhay for this issue, please support it.
John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, Facebook us at Miki Jackson, M-I-K-I-J-A-C-K-S-O-N. 100% in favor of this. You know, I hope the Hispanic, the Mexican-Americans realize who they learned organizing from on the fields, the grape fields, because it was originally the Filipino-Americans that were enslaved and treated like trash down there. And when they were pushed out and the Mexican-Americans came in, Cesar Chavez cut his teeth, learning from the Filipinos. And it's a great idea that we have a street named after them. Incidentally, right now, you can go on Vermont, from Melrose to Santa Monica, it's totally closed, the road, there are Ferris wheels, there's everything there, and Eric refuses to tell us why and when you voted. HollywoodHighlands.org, bye.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you to our guests who are here, who have spoken in favor of Giaga Square. Remi Giaga Square is something today in which we make history. We did honor recently some of the original United Farm workers, the descendants of the leadership of the United Farm workers, who were both Filipino and Mexican-American. We had them in council, and it was a great day. But in 2002, we declared the area that is bounded by the 101 freeway and Beverly Boulevard, Hoover to the east and Glendale to the west, as Historic Filipino Town. A diverse neighborhood, full of African-Americans, Latinos, Asian Pacific Islanders, Anglos, who have lived there for many years, and who recognize the common history of when people couldn't live because they couldn't afford to, or they're discriminated against, couldn't live here downtown where the city once was, they were pushed to the west. And so whether it was some of the first black churches, whether it was the founders of Pentecostalism and some of the other religions that are there, whether it was Filipinos and Mexicans who had to move to that area, it is rich with that history. But it was the first designated area that specifically focused in on the contributions that Filipinos have made to this city for so long. In fact, if you look back at the original pobladores, the settlers that came to Los Angeles, two of them were classified as Chino, which meant Chinese in Spanish, but it was they're actually Filipinos who were part of that first expedition to found Los Angeles as a pueblo. Some have gone to Historic Filipino Town and asked, well, what's Filipino about this neighborhood, and what's Filipino about this area? So what we've tried to do, whether it's the stamped crosswalks that show traditional basket weaving patterns from the Philippines, whether it's some of the street trees that we have planted, whether it's our Parol Festival, which we have, which is a traditional Christmas festival in the Philippines, of lighted lanterns that we put up each holiday season on Temple and on Beverly, we today honor the history and the people that made Historic Filipino Town great. And we honor a woman, Remidios, known as Remi Giaga, who reminds us of what service to community is about, what tireless means, and what dedication means. She lived in the United States for over 30 years. In 1988, she resided in Historic Filipino Town. While she passed away in 1997 and didn't get to see the dedication of what was her lifelong dream of creating a Historic Filipino Town, and there's a great picture of one of my predecessors as council president, John Farah, with a great big Filipino Town sign that unfortunately didn't get up in the 90s, but we were able to put it up a decade later. If she could only see the effects of her dedication, the benefits of the people she fought for today, I know she'd be proud. The fruit of that action is here today, in Historic Filipino Town, where FACLA, the Filipino-American community of Los Angeles lives, where she became a strong advocate for political empowerment. We know the contributions that Filipino-Americans have made to our state, that make in our city, and also it's there in Historic Filipino Town, where FASG, a group that she co-founded and that still thrives, the Filipino-American Service Group exists today, giving services to seniors, to veterans, and others. This is a community where we still have veterans who fought alongside my grandfather in World War II, who was in the Philippines as a Mexican immigrant, and he got his citizenship there. FASG provides to some of his fellow soldiers, who have not gotten all the benefits that they have deserved, basic social services and hot meals, and her daughter, Jocelyn Giaga Rosenthal, is really a pillar of our community there and a very active member of the HI-FI community. So I'm honored to share in giving a token of appreciation to Remi Giaga. There's a great gallery named Remi's, named after her, all she stood for and all she worked so hard for, and thank you to the entire Giaga family, to the residents of Echo Park and Historic Filipino Town, and for all the work that you do. We look forward to seeing even more fruits of Remi's labor in the years to come, and I ask you for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, that matters before us, for our vote, colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well, next item, please.
That brings us to item number five, called Special for Cards.
John Walsh, number five, sir.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, emailing at HollywoodDems@gmail.com, twittering at HollywoodDems, Facebook, Miki Jackson, M-I-K-I. Now, this, number five, you are supposed to have the full text of the motion over here. There's a bulletin board over here. I went over there, I wanted to read the entire, now there's about eight or nine other motions, but this motion for votech is not up there. Why isn't this motion up there? We want to know, especially want to hear the word "vote," since you're going to try to take away the ballot box from us so that we can use, instead of a ballot box, we just use the US Mail. I don't trust the US Mail for anything, let alone my vote. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Ms. Perry.
Parks asked me to call thirteen special, and I, no?
One, five.
No, 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 I know, I just, you're done with that, you're almost done with that, I'm sorry. I'll wait till you vote. I'm going to wait now.
Ms. Perry is concerned about thirteen. So on this matter, does anyone have any comments?
Yeah, I know.
Seeing none, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That's thirteen ayes, so you have a question number thirteen, Ms. Perry.
I have to make a motion for reconsideration.
It's the special meeting, I'm informed.
Oh, sorry, the special meeting, sorry, I'll wait.
Okay. Just following the rules, that's all. Okay, Mr. Clerk, thank you for that information. Mr. Clerk, our next item, please.
That brings us to item number eight. It is a PCN in Council District 14, a recommendation is required to grant or deny the application.
Number eight, we have cards on number eight. Number eight, John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, read all about Meg Whitman. I've been in front of you on this one before, this is another liquor license. You know the famous riddle, what has 15 eyes and cannot see? The LA City Council. And this will get your 15 eyes blindly, because I still don't understand why selling alcohol, which is a drug, is a public convenience. Ask the LAPD if it's a convenience. You can't go 50 feet downtown without buying alcohol, and you're past 19, you'll be able to get stoned on your way to buy alcohol. And if you want to know what's really hap, and incidentally, Eric says that Hollywood, that Vermont is not closed. This is a psychotic idea.
Mr. Walsh, the item is number eight. Thank you.
Objecting.
Number eight, I'm objecting.
HollywoodHighlands.org. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Elizabeth Peterson, number eight, Ms. Peterson.
Good morning, council presidents, I'm councilmembers. I'm Elizabeth Peterson, the applicant's representative. The Chapman Market is located at 221 West 8th Street on the corner of Broadway and 8th. It is in the middle of the redevelopment of Broadway. The building has been through a thorough restoration of over five years and has 168 residential units that are fully occupied. This market was approved under ZA 2009 94 CUB, CUX, with full support of Central Division Police Department, Councilmember Weezer, and Dlang, and many residents of the building. The market has less than 6% floor area that is alcohol, it is only 60 square feet of display. The market opened two months ago. We took quite a bit of time in finding the right tenant and the right operator to start reactivating the Chapman Building, and we would respectfully request that you approve this today, as it will make the market financially feasible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer, number eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move that we approve the PCN. The LAPD vice approves that downtown neighborhood council, and this is in a building that has been revitalized and affords within the confines of the future vision that we all have for the Broadway corridor, as bringing a necessary market for the local residents at the Chapman Building and the surrounding community. I move that we approve the PCN.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, that matters before us, number eight. Oh, I'm sorry, there are a couple more cards. Matt Dowd, you do have a card here, Matt Dowd.
See, I could just make you reconsider the whole thing, you know, but, see, first of all, it's lovely to see the novices who come down here and think that the city council's going to vote no. I mean, you know, it's on the agenda, it's already a yes. We need to tell these people, Warner Corner, Inc., Elizabeth, all the buttons are set to yes. Doesn't even matter what I say, it's such a waste of time, public comment, except that you're downtown here, and on one hand, everyone complains about all the urine running down the street, but you're selling alcohol everywhere, and that's what causes most of it. So I talked to Carol Sobel, you know, she's up in arms, because every time she wins something on the homeless, the police, LAPD come down on something else, and this is one of them. Down near Staples Center, right, 8th Street, I mean, it's downtown Los Angeles, it's just more problems for LAPD. So no, I'm against it, but I'm going to tell Channel 35 to watch for thirteen ayes, or whatever it is, because they're all set to yes. So congratulations, Elizabeth Peterson, you're joining the ranks of Matt Dowd, winners in the city of Los Angeles. I got a federal court injunction, thank you.
Zuma Dog, number eight.
Yeah, just what we need, more alcohol sales in Weezer's district. They complained enough, I know a lot of his constituents don't like this, but I'm here to talk about the city attorney, Carmen Trutanich. You know, he's on his, you know, he said he's not political, he wasn't going to run his office political, you know, but he's in the middle of his media tour 2010, trying to- tour 2010, trying to politicize marijuana and medical marijuana in the city. Parents... Carmen Tutanich says that it is more dangerous to drive under marijuana than alcohol. I would like parents to please consider... What... I would like by a show of hands of city council, who feels that driving under the influence of marijuana is more dangerous than alcohol? I have a unanimous agreement, and no hands went up. I am here to say that the city should be not as much worried about marijuana and much more worried about alcohol. You're effing crazy if you think that it is more unsafe to drive under marijuana than alcohol. Are you kidding? Hey, I would like you to check the stats. If Carmen wants to go on radio and put out propaganda, I'd like to see him check the stats. I'd like to see him go to the DMV and the sheriff and the LAPD and see when you have accidents, if it is more alcohol-related or more marijuana-related. How many accidents are caused because somebody smoked marijuana compared to drinking and driving? When you do the DUI checkpoints, what do you net? Okay? So, let's stop this using the city attorney's office to propagandize an anti-marijuana position when you said you weren't going to be political in office, and right when it's on the ballot, you do your LA Times and your KABC talk show circuit where you say it's so unsafe to drive under medical marijuana. Ah, once again, the only words to say is you're effing crazy. And the final thing I'd like to say is that while all that time... Okay, so anyway, we got enough alcohol. Smoke more weed. You'll have much less accidents driving. Just look at the statistics.
Mr. Weezaar. Mr. Weezaar. I don't have any other cards on this matter. Okay. So, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Very well. Next item, please. Ms. Perry, you want to go to the special? Mr. Clerk, let's proceed to the special. Madam State Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. The city is ordering an apartment building closed due to health and safety violations. Last night, the Los Angeles Fire Department and Los Angeles Housing Department inspected the building, and it was not until that time that they were able to determine the number of tenants needing relocation. It was not possible to determine the amount of money needed until after the agenda was posted. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Ms. Perry.
Can we open the roll on the findings, please?
On the findings, colleagues. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Ms. Perry.
This is a matter of great urgency, as tenants need to be immediately relocated, and the property owner is obligated to provide them with relocation assistance. And if he does not comply, the city has everything in place pursuant to advanced work done by the city attorney and the general manager of the housing department to make sure that we obtain our money from the property owner. So, I would ask for your help in accomplishing this task, as the building is highly dangerous.
Thank you. We have Arnold Sachs on this matter. Wait, excuse me. This is not... I'm sorry, this is not... I thought this was thirteen, Ms. Perry.
Special one.
All right, special one, and there's no cards on special one.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So, the matters before us, colleagues. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Very well. Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number nine, called special for cards, and for council member Weezaar.
All right. Number nine. Number nine, Arnold Sachs. Number nine, sir. Are we still on special, Mr.?
We have a regular meeting, we haven't called the special meeting yet.
Okay, I was confused on that matter. Oh, wait. So, Arnold Sachs.
Thank you. Good morning. One of the things that should be looked at while you're deciding, I believe, in this voter resurrection routine, is to maybe consolidate your elections with those that are held in November. Why not put the city council seats up for vote when the national elections are held, the representative elections are held, school board elections are held? Your last vote for the incumbent mayor drew 15% of the voters in the city. But that was in March. That was the same year some of you got re-elected. And I'd like to think that while you were watching on TV, you saw a snapshot photo of the activities that go on in city council today. Because being confused is not necessarily the exception to the rule here, but more like the current that passes for leadership and is charged with making decisions, like this one. We want to decide on vote by mail. We're going to have to leave polling places open. I believe that's required by law. I could ask for clarification, but this is a city attorney. Or maybe I should ask the city clerk, because all he needs to do is say, everybody's here, and we have a full roll call. It's amazing how you delegate the responsibilities of the jobs that you're supposed to do.
Vote by mail, Mr. Sachs, that's the subject matter.
That's a responsibility of the public, and you're deciding based on your behavior. Sorry? I am going... For you to shut me down...
John Walsh, our next speaker on this matter, John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, 1 million successful server requests per year. Ladies and gentlemen, already, Mr. Alacarn has pointed out that the office holders nationwide, the Hispanic office holders, are against this, of course. I'm telling you, you are turning your mailbox, US mailbox, into a ballot box. Have you ever gone to vote? That's like the Ark of the Covenant. That's sacred. That's what my ancestors who fought in the Revolutionary War. So, you could put your damn vote in there, and it gets counted. You can watch them... You can watch that box all day. You can watch them go into the car and bring them downtown. You can watch. You can surveil it and make sure that your vote counts. Now, you've... And, you know, the department, the mail, they're cutting the number of mailboxes. We have half the number of mailboxes. So, I just throw my ballot in the mailbox, and somehow it magically appears somewhere downtown. No, no, no magic. This is a recipe for corruption. I want my ballot box. And I don't hear smooth talkers like Weezaar, oh, no, it's going to help you, like the visitors, you know? We're coming to Earth. We're going to give you a cancer cure. We're unselfish. Anybody who tells you something is going to save money, and they're unselfish about it, are liars, like the Prop 19 people. We want our votes to be dropped in there. We want them counted, we want them watched. And incidentally, I want to thank Eric Garcetti. He shouted to me that he didn't close Vermont between Melrose and Santa Monica right now.
Number nine, Mr. Walsh.
He didn't do it.
Number nine, Mr. Walsh.
You want to vote now, stay away from Hollywood, because East Hollywood is a traffic nightmare.
Number nine, Mr. Walsh. Wayne Spindler, number nine.
Just like to note for the record, there's been two Brown Act violations on special number one, and I submitted a card on the previous matter on eight, which was not called. This is the way you run this council, and now you want to run this council with mail and ballots. Why do you want this? Because your goal is to allow everybody to vote. Non-citizens, everybody, doesn't matter what... If you cross the border tomorrow, you've been here five minutes or 20 years. You want to... The way you do your mail-in ballots, I have an experience with that, was on a special assessment in CD5, which Mr. Corretson, the campaign trail, personally guaranteed me that he was not going to approve that unless those lights were going to be needed to be put up. And what happened? Four ballots were issued, and the way that the district was gerrymandered, three out of four had to vote yes for it. And what happened? The majority voted no, and it still passed. Now, we have mail-in elections in certain situations. This is just a first step to making LA a much grander investigation like Bell. Voter fraud isn't... It isn't enough that you got to have elections in March and May and off-years. And we got so many elections in LA. I mean, I practically spent half the year reading all the ballot measures just for the LA city alone. We have elections after elections, just to confuse and cause as few people to vote as possible, while we get taxed to death and businesses keep leaving the city. And even in this meeting, nobody wants to sit here. The quorum, why doesn't just everybody just get up and leave? It's all on automatic pilot. There is no due process, there is no Brown Act. You know, Richard Alacarn is... He's got a date with the judge.
Number eight, Mr.?
Yeah, see, it's okay if you violate the rules, you know, but none of us have the rights.
Zumadog, our next speaker.
Okay, first of all, how do you know this is shady? It's Jose Weezaar's idea. I don't even think the guy would be in office if it wasn't for voter fraud. Never before has a human being closed such a gap of losership at the very end, at the last second. I could only imagine what the heck happened. So, now he wants to further put the stack to deck in his favor by allowing you to mail it in? Let's just remove any type of accountability, hey, you know, let's just mail it in. It's bad enough we got to compete with these shady council members and elected officials canvassing the community for the absentee ballots and sending them in together. It's bad enough that they have the money to do all these mailers to gather them up to be able to just flood... How are you going to verify that? You know what? I think there's a reason why in the United States of America, we have election days when people show up at polls. It's because we don't want people like Jose Weezaar, the election fraud, taking over the process.
Kathy Feng.
Kathy Feng from California Common Cause. Normally, Zumadog and I agree on a lot of things, but this is one where I'm going to have to agree to disagree. This proposal was actually put together by a number of different organizations, including my own organization, California Common Cause, League of Women Voters, California Clean Money Campaign, as part of a package to address the problem of low voter turnout, particularly in special elections. We all know, it hovers around 5% to 10%. And when you've got 5% to 10% making the decision on an entire district and who's going to be elected for a special election, that's a real problem. That's such a small sliver of the voter population. So, what we're talking about is not vote by mail for all elections, it's just for special elections when we know that the turnout is particularly low. And frankly, you can't do much worse than 5% or 6%. You might as well just sort of randomly throw out a vote, because you're not going to get much more than 5% or 6%. The council members asked before about what the history is and whether or not there are other jurisdictions that do what we're proposing. I want to remind everybody that what we're proposing is vote by mail plus neighborhood vote centers. So, there will be an opportunity for people who want to go into a location to vote to be able to drop off their vote by mail ballot in person, or to be able to cast a ballot in person at a neighborhood vote center and receive assistance in other languages or for their disabilities. The proposal right now is simply that instead of having to go through the extra steps of requesting a vote by mail ballot and then receiving one, right now, you automatically get mailed one, and maybe that will actually help people by removing barriers and allowing them to cast a ballot on election day. The key thing is that we're giving people more options. We're not taking them away. In Colorado, all counties were given the opportunity to opt for exactly this kind of systems, and they put in place some basic minimums. Here's the number of poll sites that you're going to need to keep open per 100,000 voters. I think that the city council could consider a similar thing.
Mr. Weezaar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thanks to everyone who's brought us up to this point. And the last meeting, I think there was a lot of concern about the reduction of polling places, and it's a very valid concern, and some very good reasons why we should be concerned about... Were brought up. Our clerk came up with the cost associated with keeping all the polling places open, and we needed that information to get a sense of, if we move forward, how do we move forward knowing that we are not going to negatively impact the ability for people to vote, those who do want to continue to go to the local polling place? So, they came up with some of their information, and I'd ask if the clerk could come up. And first, I want to thank you for working hard these last two days to come up with this information. I know you've been busy and stretched out in a number of other things, but if you could please summarize for the council what your findings are under several scenarios. You did several scenarios. One was, keep all the polling places open? Well, mainly not all the vote by mail. Secondly, what would it cost if we keep 50% of the polling places open? And thirdly, what would it cost if we had 10 voting centers, which are the expanded, larger voting centers that people could go drop off their voting ballot, no matter where they live, but they still get them vote by mail? So, if you could go over your memo that you presented, and this is more focused on the cost. Now, I still believe strongly that if we have an all vote by mail at a special election, we're not going to have single-digit turnout. But I think it'd be worthwhile for us as a city to move forward with this, see what it's like, and then come back and make any adjustments if we have to. But if you could just summarize for council your findings on the cost, please.
Very good. Good morning, members of the city council. Specifically on the cost, we ran three models, and we based it completely on the experience of Council District Two special election, which was held only last year, for which we were budgeted $1.8 million. If we had a single district election, and we ran it all vote by mail with all polls open, it would slightly increase our cost necessarily, because we're not doing anything different... We're not doing anything less, we're doing a little bit more. We're running the election like we usually do with all polls open, but in addition, we are sending every single registered voter a vote by mail ballot. And so, that would increase our cost by about $211,000.
10%?
Or 10% increase. The second model is if we were to keep half the polls open. And again, this is based on our CD2 experience, which had 105 polls open. So, we premise this on 52 polls open, half. We would decrease our costs by about $14,000. This would be a 1% decrease, that's with half the polls closed. Our third scenario is our original premise of all vote by mail with 10 neighborhood voting centers throughout that district. This would see a pronounced significant savings of $561, nearly $562,000, over half a million dollars, and that is a 31.2% decrease in costs.
Holly Walcott, executive officer, officer of the city clerk. Again, I just want to reiterate that we're using Council District Two as a model, and that this does not necessarily mean that all districts are alike, but that's why the percentages become important.
I want to take a second to reiterate to the council a few changes that we would see in the voting experience, both from the clerk's point of view and from the voter's point of view. Doing all vote by mail with all precincts or some precincts open would necessitate us mailing the official sample ballot and the actual ballot together in one mailing, as opposed to separate mailings, as we do now. We would have to redesign the official sample ballot, so some additional expense would be incurred. Write-in candidate lists would not be available until the ballots have been mailed out. We would also anticipate increased requests for replacement vote by mail ballots for folks who mistakenly misplaced them or erroneously filled them out. So, we would have to have provisional supplies ordered and staged. We would provide an individual roster of voters at each polling location after election day because of the higher number of provisional votes that would be...
After Election Day, because of the higher number of provisional votes that would be manually processed and counted, our preliminary and final results would necessarily be delayed. The deadline for our vote by mail canvas would have to be extended out, and the date to final certify the final results of the election would also need to be extended out. For the voter, the voter's three alternatives would be, first, they would mail in their vote by mail ballot in time to be received by the clerk by Election Day, or they would bring the vote by mail ballot with them to the regular polling place on Election Day and deposit it there. They would have to complete a vote by mail envelope. If the voter, however, forgot to bring along their vote by mail ballot with them to the polling place, we would still allow them to vote on a precinct ballot on a provisional basis. We would require them to complete a provisional envelope. Some other facts are, based on the experience on CD2, where we saw a permanent vote by mail return rate of about 46%. We would approximate about 46% vote by mail returns, averaging both the primary and general returns together. Because we would hope and expect for larger vote by mail returns, the actual at poll appearance of folks coming to the polls to vote would decrease about 25%. So on one hand, you would have less necessity for the polling place, because fewer people would be showing up to vote. However, we expect that most, if not nearly all, voters who show up at the polls will not have brought their vote by mail ballot with them, so we would have to beef up the staffing at the polling places to individually help those folks provisionally vote. The last thing I want to note is that, I want to make sure the council is clear on the difference between a neighborhood voting center and a regular polling place. In many ways, they are similar. In both cases, the voter enjoys a personal walk-in experience, there's staff there to answer the questions, there are resources for foreign language and disability assistance. But with neighborhood voting centers, voters are not restricted to vote at a designated location. They can go to any of the 10 neighborhood voting centers and cast their vote. This does make it more convenient for the voter, but does add some complexity for the clerk's office due to ballot control and voter eligibility checking. I and my staff are here to answer any other questions that the council members may have.
Mr. Alakorn.
My primary concern about this issue was relative to any potential negative impact on any particular class of voters. And I think if all we're doing is sending additional vote by mail applications, that essentially answers my question. Because not only would it allow us to make the transition to vote by mail, but over time, we could actually know when those classes that we would be concerned about would catch up in terms of their voter participation through the vote by mail process. So, under those conditions, I'd be happy to support the notion, in other words, if we are leaving the precincts open, the polling places open as they are open now, in the same numbers, and we're mailing out to everybody, I don't have any problem with that. I recognize it's an additional cost, but democracy is expensive. Now, you're talking about doing a singular council district. Could you explain why and what the challenges are in doing the citywide? Because if it's good in one district, it ought to be good in all districts. So what is the difficulty of making it happen citywide?
The short answer is, it increases in complexity exponentially, and we do not have sufficient staff or space at Pepper Tech for the volume of paper. And I, this is something that Holly has expertise in, so I'm going to turn it over to her. But in a single district election, there is only one ballot. If you go citywide, there will be any number of ballots, and the complexity increases exponentially.
Holly Walcott, it's an issue of sheer volume. In a single district election, you have 200,000 registered voters. In the citywide, you'd have 1.4 to 2 million registered voters. We don't have the capacity to mail out that many ballots. Currently, right now, a third party sends out the official sample ballots, but on the vote by mail, the city sends them out. Because we keep control of the ballot at all times, we would have to go to a third-party vendor to send out the ballots, because we do not have the capacity.
Okay, now, would there be any economies of scale?
I don't think so.
I mean, would you have, part of the 200,000, is that additional staff?
Yes.
Couldn't they, wouldn't there be any economies of scale? I mean, would we hire them temporarily and then give them to them?
We'd hire them temporarily.
So if we did 15, we could theoretically hire full-time people?
We don't have the space or capability.
With all the furloughs and layoffs, we should have plenty of space.
We don't. I think you'd have to see the county's operation to know how much space. They had to reinforce their building in order to get the equipment in there.
Okay, then, whatever happens, could we get that, if, let me put it this way, if this passes, could we get a full analysis of what that would take?
We presented that in our report in November 2009, that if we were to do all vote by mail citywide, exponentially, we'd have to increase from a staff of 25 to nearly 300, something like that.
It would increase our budget from 18, from the $16.9 million that we did in 2009, it would increase it between 19 to 24 million dollars.
But it's only 200,000 for one district?
Correct.
Because it's a single district.
Because of volume. Shere paper.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to have to take another look at the report. I'm not understanding the dramatic exponentiality of that, but...
I think what would be...
But I'm willing to go with the one district.
Thank you. Mr. Alakorn. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. And certainly, I had a number of concerns with the idea of just conducting an election, even in a special, maybe particularly in a special election, of all vote by mail. I have heard from many of my constituents who expressed some of the same anxiety I expressed on the floor the other day, that, you know, there are certain groups of people who really consider it a time-worn patriotic tradition to walk into their neighborhood polling place and cast their ballots. And I think to just dramatically take that away on the basis of trying to increase voter turnout or save money, I don't think is the right way to go. So I appreciate the fact that I think what's before us today, and I thank Councilmember Weezer for shifting a bit and agreeing to keep open the same number of polling places in folks', you know, vicinities, as well as mailing a ballot out to everyone. I understand that will be a slight increase in cost, but again, I'm not in favor of doing things just to save the city money, particularly when it comes to democracy and voting. So I think this is a way to make an incremental change in the way people have the habit of voting, and I think this is the right thing to do. I think if we'd had a higher percentage of vote by mail in the city of Los Angeles, then the next logical step would be to conduct an all-vote-by-mail election with the idea of reducing the number of polling places. But I don't think the city of Los Angeles has had that history of vote by mail in any election. So I think it's too big of a jump right now for most people, so I will vote for this today, as long as the same number of polling places are held open. And I understand, though, that if people walk into their polling place on the day of the election and did not bring their ballot, they will have to fill out the provisional ballot. How soon will those provisional ballots be counted in a special election?
It would be during the canvas period. Tom, what's the normal canvas period?
Our normal canvas period is 21 days. We anticipate, due to the increased volume of provisional ballots, to perhaps take up to 28 days maximum.
One more thing I think it's important to note is that if you keep all polls open, it is not necessary to change the charter. It would be necessary to change the charter if you wanted to incrementally start with them all and then reduce them over time, then it would require a charter change.
So what we're doing today is just, we won't have to put this before the voters?
It's up to you.
But we don't have to. It's not a charter change.
Not to keep all, to keep all vote, to keep all polls open, you do not need a charter change. If you want to incrementally decrease them over time, based on recommendation, you would need to...
And what's before us today is also the burden placed on the city clerk's office to still canvas stakeholders in the community, listen to concerns, and then make a decision on whether or not outreach, and make a decision on whether or not that particular special election should be conducted in this way, and then ultimately, that recommendation comes, still comes before the full city council, and we ultimately decide whether or not we think it makes sense in the future. Is that what is before us today?
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Cardens.
You were going to start answering a question that Councilmember Alakorn asked a few minutes ago. Do you like to elaborate on that, or do you remember what it was? No?
I do not.
Okay. You're thinking about a lot of things right now, because, and I can imagine the consternations that you're going through, just waiting for the instructions by the policymakers and what you're going to have to deal with, because the consequence and responsibility lies with your office, right, June?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. Now, whether we give you the bodies for it or what have you, it still lies with your office. Whether we increase your budget, it still lies with your office, correct?
To the point where, if we cannot perform the function, we will honestly come before your body and say we, you know, need additional resources.
Yeah, but if it's mandated in the charter, then we, as a city, are responsible for following the charter.
Absolutely.
And then if we don't afford you the proper number of votes and figure out where we're going to get the money from, and we don't give you the money, you're not allowed to say, "Well, I'm not going to do it," because step number two never happened. You still have to take care of step number one, right?
Yes.
Is to make sure that the integrity and the responsibility that lies within you is followed through.
Of course, yes.
Okay. And that's one of the reasons, I mean, I was discussing with the author of the motion, Councilmember Weezer, and I don't question in any way his motives. He's shared with me his motives, and motives are trying to streamline things and try to make it more accessible, and try to, you know, go along the lines of this organization that seems to be the sponsor, forgive me if we don't use that term around this place, but California Clean Money Campaign seems to be really, really engaged on these items, nine, 10, and 11. But even though they put out a press release saying that myself and a few other council members, the fate of this stuff lies in our hands, because they haven't been able to get an answer from us outside these chambers as to whether or not we're going to vote a or nay, as far as I'm concerned, I already did my part. I voted on one of these things, holding my nose the other day, and I'm not going to vote for nine, 10, or 11. I almost came close to voting for number nine, Mr. Weezer, but there are some things that I believe we would be irresponsible if we can't commit right now to providing the funds that your department is saying that you're going to need. If we're not willing to provide those funds and commit 100% that we will provide you the appropriate amount of funds, whether you're going to hire people or you're going to have to contract out, if we're not willing to do that on the same day that we're going to put this to the voters, then I believe that we're acting irresponsibly. Especially when you're looking at the economic situation of California, of the country, of the world, in Los Angeles, that money is getting more and more scarce. And I'm very frustrated with the fact that when departments come legitimately to this body and they say, "We're hurting, we're actually dropping the ball," and we're embarrassed to say that, that the departments are embarrassed to admit that they're dropping the ball because the resources aren't there, certain positions aren't able to be filled, et cetera, and then what we do is we kick the can down the road. If we're not willing to go ahead and vote today, or put the process in motion to actually solidify those funds, then I don't think we should put this to the voters, because your department, who's the expert and the responsible party on this and implementing it, should it pass, you're going to need the resources. And I haven't heard anybody guarantee you that you're going to get them. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Quick question. I know that you can currently take your VDM, if you've requested it, into a polling place on Election Day and put it in the ballot box. And I also, I know the representatives here from the League of Women Voters, and when they came to give us a briefing, I asked them if they could help us to publicize that more, because this is an option that is available to people in the city of Los Angeles now to go ahead and request your VDM in advance. And if we keep all the polling places open anyway, which I'm hoping that we do, if that's based on the numbers, because I know over the years we have collapsed some polling places, but people get noticed so that they can make an adjustment, then how would what we do now be any different than what is proposed? Should I say it again?
No, if she wanted to answer, if she wanted to answer.
Oh, okay.
Basically, the difference is, is instead of anyone having to fill out an application and sending it in to request their vote by mail ballot, everybody would automatically receive a ballot.
Okay, but if we work a little harder to let the, you know, universe of people who might be interested in getting a vote by mail, and I said earlier this week, I have a precinct in my own district that is 100% VDM, because it's sort of a transition, transitory district. Can't we work harder to let the world know that they can request their ballot?
Yes, we can.
And would that, I mean, we can do that on the internet, and do this with groups that are here now, work in collaboration, together, League of Women Voters, Common Cause, and all the other coalition pro advocacy groups that are trying to encourage voter turnout for those people who really do want to vote by mail?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weezer to close.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. And again, I want to thank the clerk for working quickly and getting the information we need to decide whether we should put this in the ballot. And I think, you know, the issues that were raised about having the polling places all open is a good one. And so I would suggest, and I'd like to move, that we move the amended motion by Weezer Gercetti, but we strike out language referencing neighborhood vote centers, and that we ask on the implementing ordinance that all polling places be kept open for the first one, and that the clerk's office come back to counsel, report on the findings of the first special election conducted with all vote by mail, and to report on the increase in voter participation and how, and any other relevant findings. And that way, the first one, we keep all the polling places open, but I think we will see the benefits and the voter participation increase should we send all ballots to all voters. And I think $200,000 is a small price to pay for that. You know, we often pay consultants much more than that, just to get some basic information that we need to make decisions. And here, I think we will get that information, and it's a small amount of money to pay, I think, for increased voter participation, and to get data that we need to further move in a place where we would raise the number of voters that we have in the city of LA. We don't have that right now. We're the largest city in the United States with a lower voter participation that we've seen. We don't want to stay in that category. I think we should do anything we can and work towards something that gets us out of that, and moving in this direction will get us out of that. So colleagues, I hope you allow us to move forward in this, put it before the voters, and have these elections be conducted vote by mail, so that we allow us to get out of single-digit voter participation rates. Thank you.
A second on Mr. Weezer's...
Second.
Ms. Hahn, seconds, thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Just real quickly, I'm definitely for this. Let's do it in one district, let's see how it works, let's go forward with it, and I want an a vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for those brief comments. Mr. Alakorn, for your lengthy comments.
I'm just concerned that the amendment, would the amendment be inserted into the charter? Because I think that's not, then we would have to go back to the voters to change it again, so...
No, this doesn't...
No. Yeah, it does. Well, the reason we're putting it before the charter is that in the event...
Well, the reason we're putting it before the charter is that in the event, in the future, we decide to reduce the number of polling places in the future, that's why it needs to go to the charter. However, we're giving direction in the ordinance that says, "Clerk, come back to us, report to us on the results on the first election that you kept all the polling places open, and see if we do wanna in the future reduce any places or not."
I'm not getting a clear understanding here, but the...
...each time there's a special election, that's an ordinance, correct?
The action that would go before the voters to change the charter would be to allow for 100 percent vote-by-mail elections for one district or just in general?
One district, one special district.
Okay. The amendment, would that be calling for all the precincts to be open that would be written into the matter that's going before the voters?
No, that's the implementing ordinance, as I understand it, correct?
Harith Trebedi.
Is there a way that we can write the charter amendment to include an opportunity for us to move forward without having to go back to the voters?
Yeah, Harith Trebedi from the city attorney's office. The way I understand the direction is that the charter would provide that a single district standard-owned election would be conducted in this manner, upon recommendation of the city clerk and upon the council passing an ordinance saying so, and that the first instance of that election being conducted that way would maintain all of the polling places open, but that in subsequent elections that are held in this manner, there would be discretion on the part of the clerk to recommend a lower number of polling places and on the council to approve or disapprove of that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So, Ms. Hahn.
Good, did a better job than I did. Yeah, so, again, what Holly said was, or June, I can't remember, that this actually did not, if we keep the same number of polling places, just a plain change in...
In perpetuity, but if you wanna reduce the number in the future, charter...
See, I, you know, colleagues, I feel like that's kinda like a bait and switch that we're putting on the ballot. I think in the future, if you wanna reduce the polling places, then that should go before the voters. I think if you put something on this ballot in March with everything that's on there and you expect them to figure out that the first election is gonna be not reducing it, but in the future you're gonna start reducing polling places only by the discretion of the city clerk when they bring back the recommendation to the city council, who will make that determination, that's a bait and switch, in my opinion. I think if you put it on the ballot, if you don't need to put it on the ballot and we wanna conduct a all-vote-by-mail election with the same number of polling places, then we should do that. And then we're gonna have the kind of information and data that we need, I think, to support then a real charter change that talks about reducing the number of polling places. I don't think we need to put this on the ballot.
Mr. Weisert.
I suggest we authorize the city attorney to come up with the language and to make that clear, but I do think that we need to think ahead in terms of whether we will or will not move in that direction, and then come back, get the information. The clerk has a flexibility. At some point, whether we decide to move in this direction or not, the council decides whether we do reduce any polling places, but at least we have that flexibility in terms of cost. If we, if the clerk comes back and says, "Look, I could reduce two polling places, and we'll break even and save that $200,000," we need that flexibility, but we will never move in that direction unless the council and the clerk agree that we're gonna move in that direction. But in any event, at some point in the future, we're always gonna need this flexibility.
We now have Mr. Parks for the first time.
These guys are all on my time, by the way, Neil.
I just wanted to comment on, I think it would be a mistake if you tried to put the number of polling places in the charter, because they have a deployment that they have to deal with, and any deployment you do not want to be voted on by the public. They have to be able to come to us and say, "By the trends in that community, by the change in the voting patterns, this community only needs four when they used to have five." But if you put it in the charter, there's gonna be five there no matter how many people come in or whether anybody comes in. And again, I think the message we got from last time, if you mandate that the same number of polling places stay in place, you pretty well have eliminated the cost savings that was basically addressed as a reason for doing this. And so you're gonna end up going vote by mail and then pay the same amount, and we shouldn't forget that all of us could send in a form today and get a ballot at home and send it in by mail, and if you forget to send it in by mail, you can still go down to polling place and vote. And so I think the issue is, is that the practicality of it, of how we vote is being lost in the philosophical view that we may change something to get more people out to vote. And again, as I mentioned two days ago or three days ago, all of those things that we've changed has not gotten any more people out to vote. It appears people go out to vote based on candidate and issue. Those are the two things that get them out of their house.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also wanted to highlight the fact that I think a number of us, Janice included, have worked in campaigns and on elections in South Los Angeles, and we, on Election Day, have dealt with the calls that have come in, particularly from seniors who may be confused about the fact that their polling place has been collapsed, but they do get notice and collapse and consolidate into one voting precinct as opposed to two, and in some cases, the location may have shifted, and, you know, people get upset by that, particularly seniors, because they like to go and vote in the same place all the time. The other thing that they like is if they've forgotten to mail their vote-by-mail back in, they will call our offices and we will tell them, "Don't worry, you can take it in and you can submit that as your ballot, and no, you don't have to vote by provisional ballot, you can actually put that ballot in the box." So I, you know, and it's a tough, tough area, you know, to be able to make sure that, you know, the precinct workers get there on time, that the ballots are there, and that the polling place is up and running on time, and it's all that. We always have issues in nine, eight, 15, sometimes one, and occasionally in the 10th. So I know we're all highly aware of those challenges, so, you know, we do have options, and we have options now, and we haven't fully exercised them, and, you know, I'm looking to fully exercise that, and I hope that the folks who are in the audience today will understand and work with us to help us spread the word even more aggressively so that people understand what is available to them.
Mr. Weisert. Then Mr. Alacon, or Mr. Alacon and Mr. Weisert together.
Because I pressed my button when he was speaking, so I don't understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just seeing how it comes up on you.
I agree with Ms. Hahn and Mr. Parks that to try and explain to the voters this one-time assessment and one-district application, first of all, it alienates 14 districts from the charter change period, because it's not gonna apply to their district. So I'm wondering why we don't just have a general authorization vote of the public as to whether or not the city council should have the authority to change the election process to a vote-by-mail with some indication of how we would do a pilot project, but that would give us the broader authority to implement vote-by-mail by ordinance.
Are you suggesting that a charter amendment be placed before the voters that would allow the council to decide when a particular election would be conducted by mail? We would need some information in that charter amendment as to what would be the triggering factors so that the public has notice as to what would trigger a vote-by-mail election, whether it be an ordinance passed by council or some other action.
I would assume a lot of that would come from the ballot arguments in favor.
It could, and we could, and it could be designed in a very simple way, but it's a, in the end, it's a policy direction, really, from the council.
What I don't wanna see happen is the voters come out and say they like this thing, and then we have to go back to them. I don't think...
You got a solution?
Yeah, so it seems to me that the fundamental question is whether the city council should have authority to implement vote-by-mail elections.
Right.
Mr. Weisert has a solution?
I got a solution. Let me suggest, then, I think there's been some compelling arguments made. What I'm trying to get to is to get us the information that we need to show that more vote, giving all vote-by-mail ballots will increase voter participation. That's the goal. Secondarily, if we could get cost savings, that wasn't the, you know, that's, it's additional benefit. But I think we, if we direct you, not go to the charter amendment, but direct you to do all vote-by-mail in the next special election, keep all the polling places open, get the information we need, and then decide whether we should go to the charter or not. If we get information that's compelling, that says, "Hey, we can increase voter participation quite drastically, and we could actually lower a few polling places," then let's go to the charter. I think that's the best route to go. I think...
I think that's Ms. Hahn's idea.
Ms. Hahn made a very compelling argument there, that that is the right thing to do, but if we wanna get to getting the information we need, if whether vote-by-mail, all of it gets us increased voter participation. The city attorney?
That's something that would not require a charter change. It would require an ordinance amending our election code, authorizing that, but that's a typical legislative process, as other changes to our election code would require.
Great, so I'd like to make a motion that we give the direction to the clerk to go on that route and at this time not do the charter change, yeah.
We gotta do that now.
I second.
We do that now.
And for more clarification, Mr. Cardenas.
We're only on clarification? I thought when we push our button, we can pretty much talk as long as the city attorney doesn't say we're off subject. So basically, Councilmember Weisert, by the way, you corrected me, thank you very much, California Clean Money Campaign is not the sponsor of item number nine, correct?
Common Cause is.
Common Cause is. So basically, what you're saying is, even though Common Cause thinks it's a great idea, item number nine, you actually want the voters to give us some feedback so that we can see if the voters think it's such a great idea. Common Cause is one of the main sponsors or the impetus for item number nine that's before us. But the motion that you just made, and I second it, basically is instructing the city clerk's office to go ahead and set up a mechanism so that we can have a better understanding as to what suits our voters better, and then let the voters give us that information so we can decide what policy changes we wanna make.
Yes.
Don't drive in the ground, Phil.
Got it. Good idea. Thank you, that's why I second it.
All right. So, Mr. Clerk, we now have a change from the initial direction on number nine, from a charter change to a direction, and there's been a motion, a second. Can we have that clarified for everyone for our vote?
Yes, sir. That would direct the city clerk to prepare, or to do an all-vote-by-mail at the next election and, excuse me, special election, next special election, and to establish a mechanism by which to understand what suits the voters better.
Mr. Weisert, for more clarification.
The motion would be to direct the city attorney's office, working with the city clerk, to, at the next special election, have an all-vote-by-mail election and keep the all polling places as ordinarily in place, and to report to the council as to the findings and the results as to that benefited increased voter participation or not.
And your clock's always ticking, Mr. Cardenas.
And we have 35 seconds, but I think we need a caveat. If we have a special election that's citywide, say there's a vacancy in a citywide seat, I don't think the city clerk is, has the resources, nor is the council gonna find the resources to do so, so we should say a special election of a council district?
Yes.
Right? Single district, single district. Okay, so the technical term is single district, okay.
And when are you getting that back? When are we getting that back?
That motion, Mr. Weisert?
Okay, we all clarified now? Everybody understand where we're going? Mr. Rosendahl does not understand. Mr. Rosendahl wants one more clarification. Mr. Clerk, can we give one more clarification? Or should Mr. Weisert do it?
I would defer to Mr. Weisert.
Okay. Mr. Weisert, you started this last week, I think.
Direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance, working with the city clerk's office, that will conduct the next special election for city council with an all-vote-by-mail program, single district is the language that we prefer, that will conduct the election with all vote by mail, keeping all polling places open, and to report to the council on the benefits of, or the results, whether increased voter participation or not. So we're not going to the charter amendment, Mr. Rosendahl, because it doesn't require...
This is a substitute motion, right?
It'll be a direction, not a charter change at this moment. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I just wanna get a timeline on this, because there's probably no deadline, but in the world of politics, a special election in a single district could happen very quickly, so I'm hoping you'll get that back to us within 30 days.
No.
Yeah.
I have to note, though, that it is an amendment to the city election code that would authorize this, and there's a six-month, by charter, six-month period in the city election code before any changes to the election code become operative. So the soonest this would become operative would be six months from when you pass the ordinance amending the election code.
Okay, well, I wish, then I would get this back to us as quickly as possible.
So we'll make this forthwith.
Thank you.
All right, everybody understand? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Very well. Okay, thank you. Next item, please. Item number...
Parks, hold on, hold on, Mr. Parks.
Item 13, out of order, just very quickly, we have a technical amendment to the Mikkulah...
It's a special meeting, Mr. Parks. Can we go into that special meeting, clarify that, and then go back to the regular?
All right.
Can we do that, Mr. Clerk? No, there's only one special, I understand.
Good try.
Are we gonna do it in its entirety? All right, so call the roll for the special meeting.
Alacon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weisert, Cresco, Corey, and LaBanche, Parks, Perry, Ray, Rosendahl, Smith, West, and Zain Garcia, 13 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
All right. We are now in the special. We have one item, number 13. We have Matt Dowd, Zumadog, not here, Arnold Sachs. Those are our three speakers on this matter, then, Mr. Parks, we will go to you.
Certainly glad you're keeping, Arnold Sachs, certainly glad you're keeping track of what's going on in the city council chambers. Here's my concerns, again, monetarily speaking. When you were balancing the budget, you had a number, 5 percent, that was a pay raise that you negotiated with the unions, and you flunked that. You flunked the negotiations. You could've saved the city $30 million, you had an option, and now you're gonna be involved in more accounting. Who knows what this option's gonna be? You have Mikkulah papers from 2010, A, 2010 B, 2010 C. What exactly? You've spent almost 45 minutes trying to clarify a vote-by-mail situation for special elections. Why don't you spend 45 minutes clarifying for the public what this means to them, so they get an idea? So it's not like a last-second, "Oh, oopsie daisy, can you clarify special meeting? Oh, we didn't get into the special meeting yet. Can you clarify, oh, we didn't get into the special meeting yet." I like that kind of leadership, especially when it comes to the accounting practices of the city. How much is the debt gonna be this year, $400 million? Oh, no, that was last year. This one's gonna be even higher. So I'm looking forward to the explanation of exactly what this is regarding to the city, what it means to the public, you know, the people that carry the burden of paying for your mistakes. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the city attorney that wants to make a correction of a word issue on the document, and also the city administrative office is to make a correction or an addition to the language of how the structure of the Mikkulah money.
My name's Marilyn Garcia, I'm one of the city attorneys, and we made a technical correction to the first page of the approving resolution, and the correction is to add the second to the last paragraph and to add the word "refinance" to the last paragraph. And what that does is, it explains that for the real property series, which is C, that some of the money has our... which is C, that some of the money has already been— Some of the improvements have already been made to the property, and some of the improvements will be made to the property. So the C series is financing and a refinancing. The old draft only said financing. So it's a technical correction.
Thank you. The CAO?
Halto, CAO office. In the report, we state that the bonds would be paid off over 30 years. I just want to clarify that the first 10 years would pay off the capital equipment portion, and then the real property will be paid off in 30 years.
Okay. If we could add that to the file, appreciate it.
That's the clarification on number 13 in our special meeting. See no other questions? Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, let's conclude the special.
Very good, sir. That would adjourn the special meeting. We will now return to the regular. That brings us to item number 11, called special by Councilmember Weisar.
Mr. Weisar?
Thank you. If we could—
We have some cards on number 11.
Number 11? If we could continue that till Tuesday, please?
Till—continue—
It's coming Tuesday.
Continue 11 till Tuesday?
Yeah.
November 2nd?
We heard it already, so it'll be—I don't think we'll clutter it too much.
Without objection, we will continue item 11 till Tuesday, November 2nd. That is Election Day. Next item, please.
That brings us to item number 12, called special for cards and by Councilmember Han.
Number 12. We have Dr. Williams. Dr. Williams. I know you're exercising there, sir.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Serena, Northeast LA. This is almost as good as our LA 32 Neighborhood Council General Board meetings. However, this particular subject is dear to my heart. I like storm drains. However, I also know that Prop O and the future bonds that we're going to have to pay for are also for storm drainage. And in this particular case, they say 400 identified locations are subject to flooding because of undersized drains. 40% vacancy in the operations and maintenance staff. All of these things contribute to one thing. We have a system which is not working. So what do we do? Well, two years ago, Bureau of Sanitation came in and asked for an increase in the urban stormwater program fees, doubling. Well, I don't know where that went. Well, the city council decided that the Board of Public Works didn't know what they were talking about, so that was canceled. The increase was to pay for operations and maintenance. Now we're coming back and saying again, oh, well, we need to have the stormwater inlets cleaned and the catch basins cleaned so the system operates as it should be on a 10-year flood basis. What's going on? Why don't we give the Bureau of Sanitation more funds if you want to have the stormwater not flood out the streets? Very simple. If you don't want to pay for it, don't build it. Because building it is just capital expense, but you have to keep going back to the rate payers, us, the citizens, the property owners, to pay for the continuing operations, not for just one year, but for 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Zumadog, not in the house. Matt Dowd, not in the house. John Walsh, not in the house. Arnold Sacks.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. This raises concern regarding the Great Lake in the San Pedro area. That was—my concern here is, why, after this rain, isn't this a maintenance schedule that should be done? You know, we hear so much about the maintenance schedules for the DWP and regarding their infrastructure. Doesn't there a maintenance schedule here for the Bureau of Sanitation that doesn't really necessitate taking immediate action after this last rain? Because it barely was a rain. And the involvement of the new process that puts the covers over the sewers, where it stops debris from going in, does that contribute actually to flooding in any areas?
Wayne Spindler, our final public speaker.
Yep. We can't— It actually rains in LA. I don't think anybody here, by unanimous consent, would agree with that. But yes, it does occasionally rain. Yeah, I notice you put a bunch of grates over all the storm drains that used to be open. And all the trash gets collected next to these iron grates, and the city spent a lot of money putting those in. Now, here was the problem, that somebody has to take that refuse and remove it to unblock the storm drains. So nobody thought of that. You just put up barriers to your storm drains, and you block them with leaves and trash. And you leave them there over time. And of course, nobody thought what would happen if it floods. There's a chamber on each of these grates that's supposed to open when there's enough water pressure from the water that's flowing that's supposed to open the trap up on its own so that it clears. Well, guess what? It doesn't work. And it doesn't work because many of these drains' covers were installed improperly in the street level. You use the city workers—I saw a couple of these crews doing it near one of my places. And I told them, you're putting it in wrong because you're putting it in an angle that's not going to open it up. And sure enough, all over the city, we had a lot of flooding, and that's what's causing this. So why is it that you even have to have a motion on something like this to take it up? It should automatically be done by the mayor's office. He has 240 people working for him. There's got to be at least 20 people that handle storm drains, along with all the other lobbyists. They just can't make a phone call and go out with steamers and crews and clean and clear those drains. Because what happens with these drains is the trash builds up, then it rains, then the trash rots, and then you get cockroaches, and you get ants, and you get vermin. And that increases more of the vector control problems in the city. But nobody thought of that. It was—in fact, it was just a motion that did it, and it was passed unanimously, so take care of the problem.
Ms. Han?
Colleagues, I just introduced a motion in early October just to get a status report on the condition of our storm drains throughout Los Angeles. I did have a Lake San Pedro last year. It was unprecedented torrential rains. And it came on top of the newly-installed grates in our storm drain. So I, as well as some of my constituents, were concerned that there was a correlation between the new grates and the inability for the storm water to be absorbed in our drains. And it caused quite a problem. Many of the residents had to be relocated. Majority of their possessions were ruined. And as I've heard even to this day, some of them still don't have their claims being addressed by the city. So it was a real bad problem. So I just wanted to know how we're doing. Is there a regular maintenance schedule that we have for clearing our drains? Hasn't been done recently. Has particularly been done recently in my district. And so we have here today, quickly, Robert Vega, who's the Assistant Division Manager for our Watershed Protection Division in the Bureau of Sanitation, would like to come up and just give a quick overview of what is our maintenance schedule? Is it regular? You know, it's—sometimes in LA, we don't really even know when the rainy season is or isn't. We've had some unprecedented rains recently. It's supposed to rain tonight, I understand. So where are we in terms of the cleaning of these drains? And have we checked all these grates, making sure that they're operating properly, that they open when they're supposed to open? And how are we doing on our storm drains?
Good afternoon. Yes, we do have a regular maintenance schedule. Each year, in anticipation of the rainy season, starting in May, we go out and inspect all of our critical facilities and maintain them. And for those areas where we—higher maintenance areas, we go out a second time. And just before a storm, if there is a prediction of storm, we have our crews go out and check again to make sure that those are—
Let me ask you how you're doing in your department in terms of crews and personnel. I understand there was a 43% of your positions are vacant.
I may ask our maintenance personnel—
That concerns me.
It always concerns us, too. We are able to meet what we are expected to do per our permits. We clean every catch basin or every structure prior to the rain events between May and September. We've had to adjust—we're probably about 30% less cleaning done, which is the extra additional cleanings that are done on the high priority areas, the high trash generation areas.
But have 100% of all of our drains been—
Yes.
—checked or cleaned?
Yes.
Up until this point?
Yes.
So what you're saying is those extra areas where it's higher maintenance, you're about 30% less on those areas?
Yes, we've had to adjust our plans the way we do business.
And where are those high maintenance? You better say San Pedro.
Typically, the higher trash generation areas are in the downtown areas and some of the commercial areas.
Okay.
So those are typically the areas that we have additional work done.
I did notice, though, that in the Lake San Pedro area last year, it was a severe sort of a valley around Fourth and Grand that had created this incredible, you know, flow of water during torrential storms, plus with the high tide. So that's an area that I think needs to be looked at, if I may add that to the list.
I think we have two approaches here. Number one, from the maintenance side, we have addressed all the cleaning issues in there.
Okay.
And we have—part of our wet weather preparedness plan have identified areas that we anticipate to be problems.
Okay.
That we will send crews into those areas during rain events to ensure that they're taken care of. And then engineering is working on some other plans for the area.
We've also developed projects that would alleviate the flooding, and we're working with FEMA to get grant funding for those projects.
Okay, well, that should become as good news. Are these positions specially funded?
In the maintenance section, yes.
So if they're specially funded, why has it been so difficult to fill these positions?
We're working through the managed hiring process. We're—you know, each position that's available, we're going through the managed hiring process that personnel has to show the need, show what we do with them, and show why they're there.
It still is, but 43%?
Well, there was a freeze on new hiring. And we're doing some—most of our position filling we're doing through internal transfers.
And again, colleagues, this is what we're trying to do, is transfer, you know, general-funded positions to these special-funded divisions in the city. You know, I don't know who we need to talk to, whether it's Maggie or someone, or Personnel, Dennis Zine, to really move this forward quickly, particularly as we come upon a rainy season. These positions can be filled. They're specially funded. We can get them off of our general fund. Let's try to work a little bit harder together to see if we can't close this gap of 43% vacancy in this division. Because I think that could really prove to be problematic if we have, you know, major storms in Los Angeles. So thank you for your report. Thank you for what you're doing, even with less positions. But I know you've got my commitment, and I hope you have the commitment of the whole council, to really look at managed hiring, look at general-funded positions, and see if we can't fill some of these specially-funded positions in this division. I think that would benefit the residents of Los Angeles. We're always talking about how we're having to cut services. This is a service we shouldn't be cutting, and we don't have to because it's a specially-funded position. So if I could get your support to work on moving that process a little bit quicker.
Ms. Han, we don't have any pending in Personnel Committee. It does go through managed hiring first. And once it passes that muster, then it comes to Personnel. We don't have anything pending at this time. So if you have those positions, I would suggest to go through the managed hiring, and then it'll come to Personnel Committee. We'll be more than happy to cooperate. It is an essential service, especially when we have the rains. And they are coming tomorrow, according to the weather cast. With that, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posting and referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements, colleagues. I know it's Happy Halloween and pass out the candy. And Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, first, just in a personal note, I'll be celebrating my 15th anniversary with my partner on Sunday. And it's been a great experience for me.
I thought you said your 50th birthday. I knew it was way beyond that.
15th anniversary, and I love him now more than I ever have. Now, back to my role here in the government. The LAPD Pacific Station will have an open house in a Halloween carnival, starting tonight at the Pacific Station, which is on Culver Boulevard, right there near Centinela. Tonight, it's from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Saturday, from noon to 11:00 PM. And Sunday, on Halloween, my anniversary, from 2:00 to 11:00 PM. And then we also have, in our West L.A. Fire Police Department, which is on Butler, right there by the Santa Monica Boulevard, a Halloween haunted house on Friday, the 28th, and on Saturday, the 30th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. So we're all invited to trick-or-treat and have fun on Halloween weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. On announcements, any other announcements? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just ask the public with this weekend to contact their local parks, recreation facilities, and police station, fire station regarding all of the chaperone Halloween events that we would like kids not to be roaming the streets. But almost every park facility, almost every police station and fire station has a chaperone event for Halloween. And we just ask the public to take advantage of that.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And Mr. Garcetti. No other announcements, colleagues. We want to wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween, Hollywood Boulevard, on Sunday night. I'm sure it will be an exciting experience for all. I will be there, along with the deployment of the LAPD. Journey motions, colleagues. Are there journey motions? Please stand for journey motions. Mr. Carrick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Benjamin Lee Veal. Benjamin was the father of Inglewood City Clerk Ivonne Horton and the father-in-law of Board of Equalization member Jerome Horton. He passed away earlier this week, surrounded by a loving family. A military veteran, Benjamin will be remembered as an early political activist and one of California's first black union contractors that built skyscrapers. He helped to construct major landmarks, including Circus Circus in Las Vegas, the federal building right here in West Los Angeles, and portions of Disneyland in California. In addition, he was a confidant to our famed mayor, Tom Bradley, and Councilman Gilbert Lindsay, and had a long list of friends and notables, including the late Benny Goodman and Sidney Poitier. He's survived by his wife, Margaret Veal, children Patricia August, Ivonne Horton, Elaine Eleanor Turner, and Benji Veal, and many other grandchildren, great-grandchildren, nieces and nephews. And he will be greatly missed by friends and family.
Ms. Han?
Thank you. I would like us to adjourn today in the memory of the great actor James MacArthur, who was best known for portraying Detective Danny—Dano Williams on the original Hawaii 5-0, the TV series that turned "Book 'em, Dano" into a national catchphrase. He died yesterday at the age of 72. He was born in Los Angeles, James Gordon MacArthur, and he was the adopted son of Helen Hayes, a great actress who was dubbed the First Lady of the American Theater, and Charles MacArthur, a playwright and screenwriter who co-wrote the play "The Front Page." Jim, as he was preferred to be called, was famous for his Disney movies and, of course, the catchphrase, which is experiencing a resurgence thanks to the new Hawaii 5-0 TV series. On a personal note, I am so fortunate that I actually got to meet Jim MacArthur twice. He came to San Pedro in 2008 and 2009 on the invitation of L.A. Harbor International Film Festival founder Stephanie Marticich, who was featuring the movie "Swiss Family Robinson" as the book, as the movie and the book at her annual festival. And I was privileged enough to be invited to attend a small dinner with him at Papadakis' restaurant. And he was just such a warm, personal, generous-with-his-time, friendly guy, and I really now look back on that dinner I had as being a really special memory. I want to always thank my friend Stephanie for inviting me to that. One funny story that was recounted by John Bogart in the Daily Breeze about Jim MacArthur was the day he came home from school with a book report assignment on "The Pearl," only to find its towering author, John Steinbeck, drinking coffee with his father at home. And the next day, when he turned his report in and had all this information, the teacher said, "Where did you get all this information?" And he said, "From Mr. Steinbeck." He survived by his wife of more than 25 years, Helen Beth Dunst, a former professional golfer. He had four children, Charles, James, Mary, and Juliette, and seven grandchildren. Services will be—are being planned in New York, where he grew up, Palm Desert, where I believe he lived until his death, and Honolulu, where he spent many years filming the TV show. A great actor, but a great man. Rest in peace, Jim MacArthur.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. I have a journey motion joining me is our city engineer, Gary Lee Moore, and his wife. The deceased, Mrs. Okshin Kim, born North Korea, August 18, 1933. Miss Kim was forever separated from her parents and siblings when she fled to South Korea during the Korean War at the age of 18. She met Hai Koo Kim in North Korea. They were married, then had three children. In 1976, the Kims moved to the United States, where they took residency in Koreatown, worked in sewing factories in the downtown area. Okseok and Hai Koo were married 47 years, resided in Torrance. After Mr. Kim's passing, Mrs. Kim moved to the Harbor Towers in San Pedro. Mrs. Kim had many hobbies, such as cooking Korean food, gardening, traveling overseas. Her favorite place to visit was her homeland, South Korea. Well-known for her green thumb, she loved spending her days out in her garden, and her favorite plant was the flowering cactus. Peacefully passed away October 21st of natural causes in San Pedro. Married—the daughter, Chin Suk, is married to Chief Engineer Gary Lee Moore. They have two sons, Chris and Chin, two grandchildren, Hanmi, 16, and Ryan, 14. On behalf of the L.A. City Council, we're adjourned in memory of your mom. May she rest in peace. All members on that. All members on that. And Phyllis Lyons from our Personnel Department. Her dad passed away. Frank Murphy. Frank Murphy, sixth of seven children, born January 10, 1922, called to military service during World War II from 1942 to 45. He was a crew chief in the Army Air Corps, assigned to the 405th Bomb Group in the European Theater of Operations. After the war, he worked as a federal civilian service employee at the U.S. Military Academy at West Point, New York, for 43 years, retiring as a hospital administrator at the Keller Army Hospital. Active volunteer in his community, serving the Knights of Columbus Sacred Heart Church, thrift shop, food pantry, a dosent at the Constitution Island Historic Park. Survived by his wife, Phyllis, of 60 years, and the daughter, Phyllis Murphy Lyons, and grandson's Will and John Lyons. May he rest in peace, Frank Murphy.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. This concludes this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We will be—